Robert, are we good to go? Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to call this October 20th, 2020, regular school board meetings to order. I have members Bellamy, Mitchell, myself, member Michaelis, member Marsette, member Hildy, here in person, as well as our superintendent, Dr. Bishop. On Zoom, I have board member Holloman and board member Donley. So all board members are present for this meeting. Next up is our flag salute. And member Marsette, if you could please do that for us.
I have quite the holy dance in the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Thank you. I'm going to read a brief opening statement. The board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Dinana people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our virtual meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept. A second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Is there any additions or removals or opposition to the agenda as written? Seeing none, the agenda is proved as written. Next up, we have our board conference and committee reports. I'm going to start with our board committees. I'm going to start with finance and board member Marsette first, please. While you're working on that, I will go ahead and go to...
I got it. So our finance committee met today. Several things we talked about. One is enrollment. Current enrollment, 1,962 students. We had projected 45,579. Some of the funding impacts that we're looking at is the projected FY21 fund balance, the 12.2 million shortfall in state and local revenue, 10.9 million in internal transfer to cover student movement to ASD correspondence schools. And annual inflation will also impact us by 10 to 12 million. Unknown variables that we talked about is the next round of federal stimulus, when and what it would be, unknown costs to meet school board goals, number of students that will return to ASD and FY22, unsettled contracts. And then we spent quite a bit of time talking about the budget process. Not having a bond this year because we did a two-year bond has given us more time to focus on our budget, and so we're starting that early in the discussions and the process. And we'll continue to have those discussions at our next board work session, which will be 3 November. And our next finance committee meeting will be the 16th of November.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like member Bellamy to talk about our communications committee.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. The communications committee met on the 13th. And actually, we had a very brief discussion on our strategic planning process and how we were going to present those to the public. And then we moved right into our media training, which was facilitated by Strategies 360. And that took up the rest of our meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 10th at 4:30. And it will be held remotely via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, member Hildy with governance.
Thank you. We did meet last Tuesday, but I haven't written my report yet, so I'd rather just do it at the next board meeting when I can give that to all of you. And then can I update school business partnership? Okay, I always keep meaning to do this, but... So I serve on that board, but it's a school board position. It's just because it's my assignment. So just right now, the executive director has left, and then the executive committee is in the process of looking to refill that position. But just to keep the board informed, it was a complicated process and maybe contentious is the word. So there's just some transition that's happening. And, you know, the executive committee and the SPP is working through that. But I just want to give a status update. That's been kind of late spring into summer. So if you have questions, you can ask me. I might not know them, but I couldn't reach out and find out.
Thank you. And also, if we could just get a quick update from member Marsette, the chair of the Strategic Planning Ad hoc Committee. I believe there's a meeting coming up and just kind of the discussion of going forward.
Yes, we finally have a completed draft of our goals and our guardrails. And so, I can't even remember when our first meeting was, but it was way back when, before all of this excitement. We are now pulling together our community members that form our, help form our Strategic Planning Committee and propose rails to them and getting their opinions and comments for the best way to get that back out to our public, our community, parents, students, get those, the draft of the guardrails and goals. Once we receive that, the board will meet again, and we will finalize those based on the feedback we receive. And then Dr. Bishop and her team will go to work writing up the objectives and how we're going to do that. And we do, that meeting is scheduled November 27th? October, October 27th, so yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is community outreach. Are there any board members that would like to share anything that they have talked about or heard about through their community outreach? Member Bellamy?
I'd just like to share a couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend the 64th Council of Greater City Schools Conference, of which both our superintendent and our president were presenters or facilitators. Anyway, that was my first, and I found that to be very, very, it was just wonderful. I enjoyed it so much. One of the highlights for me was a student town hall that they held. Students from all over the country came together via Zoom to have a conversation on race, social justice, race and social justice issues. But it was just great. The other thing is, Dr. Stock and I got to participate in the Fall Constituents Meeting hosted by Senator Begich and Representative Tar. And Dr. Zink was also on that panel or on that thess. So, and then just yesterday, I got to participate in the Make It Monday Forum, and I have won the door prize. I did.
Thank you so much. Any other board members want to share anything? Member Mitchell?
So I would concur with Margot that the Council for Greater City Schools Conference was wonderful as usual. And I don't have any thoughts pulled together specifically on that. I can try to do that and share it with the board. But I, the two strands they had this year, one was specifically on equity and one was on COVID, and I thought they did an excellent job. It was really worthwhile. And then the other thing, Dr. Zink was on our church morning service, Sunday morning, for a couple of hours, and that was really nice to hear the latest update. And she talked about, you know, for the school district, how there's just no clear path forward. It's pluses and minuses on, you know, health benefits if we stay the way we are and health benefits if we go back to, back to in-person schooling. So that was, that was wonderful.
Thank you. All right, moving on in our agenda, just a friendly reminder to both Andy and Dave, please use your videos and use your blue hands so I can also see where you're at because I don't want to miss your comments as we move through the agenda process. Thank you. Next up, under goal monitoring is engagement data, and going to give Dr. Bishop a quick moment to speak.
We're working between Zoom and here, so sorry. I always thought it was unmuting myself down here, but I needed to unmute myself here. So thank you, Madam President. I want to take responsibility for not having reports. The engagement data that we could capture, we related it to attendance data over the years. And what we found was that the collection methods this year and how we do that did not match prior years. And when we were... Attention looked great, but when we were reviewing those data ourselves and having the discussion be prepared, we found some inconsistencies in the data that did not hold true as we were double checking. And we had to pull that this afternoon at the last minute. We are going to go back to the original plan. We just didn't have time to actually dig into the engagement data. We're using quarter grades, quarter information. What we do know is certainly we extended the grading period. We've changed some expectations in the type of work, not the standards for which the kids have to demonstrate, in relation to the feedback from students and others about the time needed to complete. So we made some changes there. So we don't, we had to extend those data because of the extension of time. And then the attendance data didn't work out as well. So we looked at both. We will have that engagement data specifically to outcomes for students at the following goal monitoring. We'll need time to do that due to the extension of the quarter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up in our agenda is public testimony. I'm going to read another brief statement. "The board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The school board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for telephonic testimony or to email written comments by 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. These comments will become a part of our meeting record. There's a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. And just so those know, we have 32 people up front for public testimony. We will go into our second hour. If you have signed up in advance for telephonic testimony and received directions on how to condone to testify in the order that you signed up, you will have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a chime will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." First up on our list. And normally I can track. I don't see her.
President Michaelis. There may be some people who are logging in a little bit later, more like 6:30 without the goal monitoring report. It was a little quicker than what I had anticipated.
Okay, fair enough.
We might need to circle back to some that aren't there.
Got it, okay. So let's go down the list for the ones that we've, and we'll just kind of work our way down. Okay, so the first one I see, caller number one, Erica Kelsey. I see her in the queue. Erica, are you with us tonight?
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Erica Kelsey. I mentor three refugee kids through Catholic Social Services, all of whom attend AFC schools. In September, I sent a written testimony about classifying ELL kids as high need for early return to in-person classrooms. Two weeks ago, I told you about my experiences with Deani, who tested in her native language below kindergarten as she started fourth grade. Today, you'll meet her sister, Stephanie. Stephanie is 14, more a woman than a child, tall and slender, and much too serious. Two years ago, she began eighth grade at Clark. Her teacher told me she was the brightest student in her class. She got the only A in second semester English, something she recounted to me with such quiet satisfaction on the way home one day. I helped her fill out an application for National Honor Society. We struggled together with examples of leadership and teamwork and accomplishments because she had never joined a club or played a sport. Yet in her single-parent family, she cooked, queened, and tended to her baby sister while her dad worked 12-hour days. Culturally, the eldest daughter takes on a big role in family life. She handles it with amazing grace. Last year, she changed schools. Several missing assignments and failing grades were posted just prior to the end of the fall semester. That was my first clue that something was amiss. In helping her race to catch up over several very late and junk food-laden evenings, I identified two things. The first was a series of gaps in her math foundation, and the second was both math and language arts homework that far surpassed her abilities. The ELL family liaison was very helpful in explaining test scores and placement, but even she was unable to influence any changes or even get a response from the school. I learned that Stephanie was stuck in a higher level because of an uneven split in class sizes and not enough kids to fill two groups. As a result, she became discouraged and apathetic in her two core classes, while she continued to do well in electives with more support. I began what I remember as an email campaign on her behalf that continued for several months. There isn't time to recount everything, so I will tell you this one thing that has stuck with me in an email from the vice principal of her school. It is a direct quote related to multiple requests for extra help in math. At the secondary level, it is incumbent on the student to advocate for their education. With her English at only an emerging level, the concepts in math, regardless of numerical similarity, will be a long time in obtaining. Two years later, the smartest kid in her class still cannot sign her name in cursive, conjugate regular verbs in the present tense, or recite the multiplication tables, but we are getting there with the help of a private tutor and handful of high school teachers who are willing to both push her and catch her when she falls. Please understand that ELL kids were not okay before coronavirus. They are not independent learners, but that doesn't mean they can't learn. Stephanie has left behind her home, her mother, her language, and her culture, all for the benefit of an education. Her role is teaching her not to look beyond what she's been handed. Let's you and I teach her something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up in the queue, I have Erin Hall. Any chance Erin showed up in person? All right, we'll circle back around when I see the caller call in. Next up, Patty Hamery. And Patty is here in person with us. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm taking off my mask.
And there's no timer for them to see because the TVs are all out.
Is it okay? Yeah, we can hear if you keep it up close.
Keep it up close.
Yeah.
There's no screen.
And there's no screen with a timer, so just listen for the...
And Patty, at 30 seconds, I'll do this. Our TVs are out, so they won't be able to see the timer, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
We've got three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Sure, thanks. Good evening, school board. My name's Patty Hamery, and I'm a first-grade teacher with many years of teaching primary. First quarter was an intense learning curve for all of us. Last week, I hosted 23 Zoom conferences and Zoomed twice a day with all of my children and talked with all parents of the 23 children I teach. This is what I learned from the parents. Their children are learning to read. Yes, the parents have figured out the technology, and more importantly, so have the kids. The kids are learning. The parents shared that with me when I asked an open-ended question, "How's it going?" The students arrive on Zoom twice a day with headphones on, ready to learn. I tell them they are the captain of an airship that can fly anywhere on Earth. I am posting videos, modeling phonics, and guiding student learning using tools we are learning together, using the curriculum structure that your team has created. The kids and teachers are stepping through this giant virtual door. And the kids are learning. Their brains are learning. And this generation will be the first generation stepping through this hoop together. In my daily Zooms, I have not observed mental or emotional stress from children. Have some parents shared with me any positive COVID at home? I quote Dr. Tanya, all doctors at the American Academy of Pediatrics. "If you're doing all the right things, masking kids, keeping them distanced, and watching hands, you're going to decrease your chance of transmission. But if they take masks off eating lunch and they're indoors in close proximity, you've sort of derailed your entire plan because lunchtime is the most high-risk time to transmit COVID-19 or any illness." She is a teacher of doctors, clearly stating that it isn't safe for children to eat lunch in our classrooms unmasked. I show you my three-foot ruler and ask, "How is it possible to keep active six-year-olds in their own safe sphere or bubble, imaginary three-foot bubble? This is what you are asking us to do." If we could jump forward in history, I question what future people will think as practices. Now is the moment and time to stand up for patience. This generation of young people are developing their brains, thinking, and tech skills, taking giant leaps way beyond what we know. As a primary educator, I know that consistent routine, peer sharing is essential, along with a learning environment that is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the telephone, speaker number four, Kristen Bologna. Kristen, are you with us this evening?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kristen Bologna, and I am a teacher in the Anchorage School District. I'd like to comment on the district-wide communication that Dr. Bishop sent out last week. Dr. Bishop, in the email, you stated, "While our teachers, administrators, and support staff put tremendous amounts of time and energy into innovative online learning methods, our current approach cannot provide the results our students deserve. And you are correct, educators continue to put in countless hours towards creating accessible and equitable curriculum for all students. Is it providing the results our students deserve? I would say yes, because doing so ensures that staff and students alike stay safe and healthy. To put the focus on academic performance before someone's well-being would be outrageous." Dr. Bishop goes on to say, "Declining achievement on learning data, the doubling of failing grades, reports of self-harm, and other social and emotional challenges underscore the struggles our teachers, students, and parents are having this school year. I'm a bit confused about where the data came from that indicated declining achievement and the doubling of failing grades. Did this come from the I Ready program, which is new to our district and means we have no baseline which to compare it to? Or did it come from the ASC virtual program, which has been, to what most can agree, kind of a mess? We recently finished our first quarter of the school year, so it is likely that we can gather data from these grades, but the email was sent out prior to the finish of the quarter. For a district that prides itself on data, I find a lack thereof, quite frankly, irresponsible." Dr. Bishop continues in her email, "After much dialogue with state and municipal medical experts, direct feedback from school administrators and teachers, data on student learning outcomes, and most certainly input from parents and students, it is time to get kids back into schools. Again, it would be helpful to understand the information you say you are working with. The elastic Department of Health and Social Services recommends six feet distance between individuals and less than 15-minute periods of interaction. This is absolutely not possible in any classroom. Your teacher feedback also seems to contradict that of the AEA, whose survey showed that 80% of its members did not feel safe going back to school in person. But please let me know. Of course, teachers want to be back in school with their students, but we want to do so only when it's safe." Finally, in the email, Dr. Bishop declares, "Even though we are currently in the highest risk category for community transmission, in-person school is the right thing to do for our students and our community. We had 111 new cases today in Anchorage. To completely disregard the risk levels and safety recommendations is reckless. Dr. Bishop, members of the school board, I do not envy the position you are in. No matter what you choose, some people will be happy while others will not. But based on the inconsistent and seemingly rash decisions of this district's leaders, I fear that you have lost the confidence of the teachers that work here and quite possibly our community, and I hope that you can make better choices in the future. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Next up is speaker number five, Heidi Sukada. Heidi, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you very much. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. "With the decision open schools, I'd like to pose some questions for you to think about. I realize you can't answer them, but I think they're very important to think about. First, why is there a matrix? It's not being used as a guideline. On October 15th, when Dr. Bishop announced the return of pre-K through second, the number of new cases per 100,000 was more than double the highest transmission rate. It was 428. Today, it's 468. From whom are the threats of self-harm and suicide coming? Where is the data? In the past month, the superintendent referred to middle and high school students, but she hasn't shared the sources, and she's not sending those students back. Are the rates of self-harm and suicide higher than in years past? Again, it's higher than the middle and high school students going back instead of pre-K through second. Are our counselors contacting these families and offering support services for these students? Where are the subs that were supposed to be assigned to the buildings? We have no subs, and teachers will be required to take sick leave. Has anybody in the administrative building volunteered to be a sub? I've heard numerous signs they have certifications, which means they could sub for us. What's going to happen to the continuity of learning when we're forced to close due to an exposure? Continuity is key to success. And until the case numbers indicate that we are in a low-risk environment and are unlikely to have to close due to exposure, we need to focus on our online environment to provide the consistency for our students. That's when they will succeed. That's when they will grow. Where are the sanitizer supplies that we've been told are here? My school has one hand sanitizer dispenser at the front of the school, and I have enough in my supply box to last two days when we are back face-to-face. When are schools going to have the electrostatic guns to ensure that cleaning is done thoroughly? Spraying down with the tabs and wiping off with paper towels that really don't wipe anything, they don't absorb anything, all they do is move bacteria around and viruses around, is not going to do it. We need the electrostatic guns that we were promised. How am I supposed to explain to parents that their child will definitely be less than three feet from others the majority of the day due to my classroom space? Dr. Zink has repeatedly said that six feet should be the minimum, and yet in my classroom, I cannot create that space. It's impossible. When will those in the admin building be returning to work and opening the building to the public? If it's safe for us, then it is safe for them as well. Importantly, why is the school board allowing one person to make this decision? We hope that as a school board, you would guide decisions, not allow one person to make the decision. I invite each of you to ride a bus, be in the classroom during lunch, provide supervision during arrival and dismissal, and be willing to sub for teachers who will be sick. I think it's important that you see firsthand the true implications of the decision that has been made. Thank you."
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Monique Duggins. Monique, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You've got three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Monique Duggins, and I am a teacher here in the Anchorage School District. Good evening, and thank you for what you do. But now let me get to why I am testifying. I am very disheartened that the district thinks it is okay to expose some of us before others. I don't understand how you think it is okay to send some of us back, especially some of the most vulnerable among us, our special education babies who have various and sometimes numerous health issues before others. How can you justify exposing some longer than others? I have also heard talk of concern for our students who are being abused and/or neglected, and those who suffer with mental illness or have thoughts and/or attempts of suicide. So how can you justify only protecting some of our students and not all of our students? Who made you God? If you are forcing us back into the buildings with students... If you are forcing us back into the buildings with students, then it should be all or none. As a woman with underlying health conditions, I am furious because I feel like I don't matter as much as a middle or high school staff member. As a mother and an educator, I am furious because it's like you are killing our babies that only some of them are important enough to be protected, to be fed, and not all of them. This virus has wreaked havoc on our world, and there is no easy solution. But what is appalling is that you would create division and animosity amongst your staff during these already volatile times by literally dividing us up. It's appalling that we are not being treated equally, fairly, or respectfully. How dare you lessen our value and use us as guinea pigs to work out the chink of this re-entry experiment, because that's what it is. No one else's life is more or less important than those of us who are going in first. It might not sound like it, but I have the utmost respect for your position. I just don't respect this choice that you are making to pick and choose whose lives you will endanger or to pick and choose to endanger any of our lives at all. I am so furious that this is even an option. I have been saying these things to people who have no say in this matter. I always tell people, if you have a problem with someone, take it to that person directly. So here I am, taking my own advice. If I can say these things to everyone else, I should be able to say them to you. In my opinion, it is not right nor fair to send some of us back and not all of us. Unfortunately, I am not able to quit or retire. But with foolishness like this, I wish I could, and I hope and pray that those who are able decide to get out. I'll close with this summary, all or none. Thank you for your time and hopefully reconsideration.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number seven, Susan Ritter. Susan, are you with us?
Good evening. How are you all tonight?
Good, thank you. We can hear you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I wish I were as eloquent as the previous six speakers. So I will be direct and honest and polite. We are in the 26th to 27th day of COVID-19 cases over or in the triple digits. We have been asked since March to wear masks, to wash our hands, to stay socially distant. And as of today, all I, what I hear frequently is we're just exhausted of coronavirus, and it will go away. It hasn't gone away. We haven't taken the time to be serious, and our leadership has not pushed for mandatory mask-wearing. I work at a high school, and not everyone wears a mask. They might wear a face shield, but right now, the policy of ASD is to wear a face shield and not a face mask with a face shield. That is not going to help reduce the numbers of coronavirus. I'm asking that the school district be consistent in its messaging, making everyone wear a face mask and a face shield on their face if they want to do that. But they must wear a face mask. The message has to be consistent and enforced by our administrators. That is the most important way for us to lower our coronavirus numbers so that we can get back to school in January. If the suggestion that we go, some schools go back, some grades go back on November 16th, that will be 22 days of in-school learning before the holiday break. That makes no sense to do it for 22 days. So please, ASD, mandate masks to be worn by every employee in your school district. Allow the principals to enforce that rule. Because at this point in time, it is not enforceable because there's a loophole that you've allowed that face shields can replace face masks. That is my say for the evening. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up in person, I have Corey Ast. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Board. This is Corey Ast, Anchorage Education Association President. I want to start off by giving an award to one of you. The Super Role Model Award goes to Dave Donley. He has consistently been absent from a board meeting since the pandemic started. Thank you, Dave, for being a good role model. My second shout-out, I want to give a shout-out to 15 or so special teachers, educators who got moved this last weekend from Kincaid, Huffman, Trailside, Alpenglow, Ursa Major, Bear Valley, Ravenwood, and Homestead. Whether they volunteered or involuntary moved, I just want to acknowledge that. It's a very stressful time in Alpenglow. There are also some reassignments at Northwood, Fairview, Mountain View, Northstar, and Baxter. I feel for those teachers. It's a lot of work to move mid-year. Like Dr. Bishop, I ache for families and students who are struggling. There are real problems and real consequences from this terrible time period. We are in, ASD is in, a lose-lose situation with two bad choices. I'm right there with everyone here. Stay in our online environments, and students may not achieve. Families have conflicting work situations, isolation, and more. Go back to face-to-face learning, where student achievement may be constrained by safety protocols and increased exposure of COVID-19 to students and staff. It's a lose-lose decision. I need to clarify something. I've been asked to clarify something. The association is not a decision-maker. We do not decide or help decide whether to go back to school, and we do not decide or help decide whether to stay out of school. I have been part of the task force, and I appreciate everyone who's allowed me to participate. That body is more of an informed body, not a decision-making body. So I just want to clarify my role in this process. I appreciate the information that is shared, but I am not a decision-maker, and the association probably shouldn't be. We make our, we say we're a data-driven institution. What is the data right now telling us? The state, for all intents and purposes, is red. Hospital capacity is red. This is what bubbles look like. You just need one out of many bubbles to bring exposure. And when you're exposed, or you contract it, the consequence is the same. You are going to be in quarantine. We need a matrix. We need a matrix. And I know my time is up. Thank you. There's more I would like to say. There'll be another time. Have a good night.
President, pointed personal privilege?
Oh, is that, is that Dave?
Yes.
Yes, Dave, go ahead.
As long as I was personally attacked, I have not been absent from any meeting. I've attended every meeting this year. I have chosen to attend by Zoom. If the union president wants to come back and clarify his statement, I'd be very grateful for that.
Yeah, there was a go-back-and-forth, but Dave, your point is very well noted. Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number nine, Mark Grober. Mark, are you with us tonight?
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Faced with the district's sudden dumping of Smart Start just weeks into the term and the decision to move to a new plan that had never been broached with the board or community, I felt compelled to address some of the more technical claims made by the superintendent about the administration's ability to provide for the health and safety of student staff, and of course, as we are experiencing an epidemic, the balance of the community. I contacted a local engineer with expertise in ventilation and a government epidemiologist to obtain their assistance. I want to determine what specific documentation would have to be in the hands of ASD employees for them to claim that ASD's buildings met ASHRAE and CDC ventilation and filtration recommendations. Regarding the epidemiology of SARS-CoV-2, I reviewed the published and pending literature regarding aerosol contagion, airborne transmission, super-spreader events, and ventilation so as to identify the analyses that would be necessary to complete prior to opening schools. Based upon this research and expertise, I developed testimony in an extensive public records request, which was submitted as written testimony to this board a month ago. As you may remember, I specifically also requested that the board require the production be made quickly and at public expense so that the entire community could be reassured that there were data and analysis underlying the administration's claims. The board refused to take any such action. The district initially failed to comply with the public's records act, but after threat of litigation, finally sent me an email, which indicated that it would take months at a cost of almost $30,000 to just go look for the records regarding the status and maintenance of the district's ventilation systems, while the documents I requested regarding the district's analysis of threats, alternatives, PPE and emergency order compliance didn't even exist. In other words, no data and no analysis. I forwarded that email to you, as ASD refused, refused to add that document to the record for this evening. In the interim, the district has had Mr. Hargrave attend building team meetings to claim that nothing in my request is a matter for anyone's concern. But on pointed questioning from building staff, he was repeatedly forced to admit that he had no data, no data, to share with staff that supported any of his claims. To be blunt, ASD, which argues that it is a data-driven enterprise, has simply asked the community to trust it with our lives. Yet it has absolutely no basis on which to make such a request and is placing countless lives in danger to its reckless conduct. ASD must either prove schools are safe or provide full mitigation procedures, including powered air purifying respirators for teachers and students to prevent the transmission of COVID-19 and avoid the constant and destructive opening and closing of schools seen in other districts and states.
Thank you very much.
Would that mean my time's up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up in the queue, speaker number 10 is Kayla Page. Kayla, are you with us tonight? Kayla, can you hear us? Or unmute your phone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I was shocked to learn that there was going to be a new plan to reopen schools. During the briefing with my principal, she read directly from the email that was sent to her. The words that stuck out to me most were, "The youngest and most vulnerable will be going back first." I'm an elementary teacher. I've invested so much of my time, money, and soul into this district and my students. I'm proud to be a teacher. I love my students. I love my fellow teachers, and I want to see them make it safely through this global pandemic. I will start with responsiveness. Public education should be responsive to an ever-changing world. This is one of the core values and beliefs of this school board. Our world has changed. We are not in the same place that we were last October. I wish with all my heart that we could go back to normal. We all have felt COVID fatigue. It's hard to continue social distancing and wearing a mask. It's easy to let our guard down, but right now, that's just something we can't do. We have to continue to be strong for one another. COVID case numbers have only gone up. Our risk of catching this deadly virus are higher than they've ever been. This is a critical time for students. I understand the value of education. I'm a teacher. This is what I do. I know that virtual learning is not the same as face-to-face. I know that students' mental and social health is strained. I know that parents need to work and that childcare options are expensive and not always what we want or what we need them to be. I also know that my job is to protect children. This comes with great responsibility. I've had to report difficult things. Hand out food bags on Fridays so that students can eat over the weekend. Offer compassion and support to parents and great-grandparents who are struggling to make ends meet. I hold the class meetings, and I work on issues that happen on the playground. I restock the classroom first-aid kit with Band-Aids. I made the Alice Plan for how to evacuate the class and get them to the rally point. So now it's my responsibility to advocate for the lives of my students and their families? This disease is devious. It moves quickly without detection in most cases. You can't honestly, in your heart, consider that the life of a child is worth the risk. All schools and departments will be safe and supportive. This is another core value and belief for this school board. Please choose to keep our students, families, teachers, and school staff safe by not returning children into school buildings until this pandemic is under control. It's not about money. It's not about making people happy. This is about what's doing, doing what's right. Taking a stand and saying, I would rather do everything I can to protect the life than risk it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number 11, Posey Boggs. Posey, are you with us tonight?
Hi, this is Posey. Am I connected?
You are, thank you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you, President, and school board members, and Superintendent Bishop. I agree, I do not want to be you all. There's no way to get around some of the facts about COVID. It's highly contagious. It takes an intense level of mitigation procedures to prevent transmission in schools. The intense mitigation procedures, you guys already know you have them memorized by now, I'm sure. But they can be enhanced by issuing the PAPers, the Power Air Respirators, to teachers because they filter 99.8% of viruses. Another sinking out of the box thing that ASD could do is double-shift classes to lower class sizes. The most important thing during a pandemic is to be heroes, to rework your budget to be able to do so. Math and reading are the most important things. Everything else can wait. By opening schools in this manner, it can open the Anchorage economy. Thinking about that, if the whole Anchorage economy can be improved by schools being fully open and safe, then, you know, you can pay for it by asking the city for a bond to make you whole again, to make ASD's budget whole again. But I want to also address a trust issue. I'm not seeing, I'm not hearing, I'm not feeling from people a lot of trust that the school district is fully prepared to take the steps that it will need to take to keep schoolteachers and children safe. Ones that avoid the constant and destructive opening and closing, and opening and closing that we see in other districts and other states. So how do you build this trust with the community? Hearing little whispers about, oh, there's a prototype classroom that's going on, is not sufficient. We need to see it. We need to be assured that the Anchorage School District has truly in place all of the mitigation procedures in front of God and everybody, and even go beyond what's needed. At this point, I want to be careful of my time. More and more data is coming out about the long-term health effects that are serious on even healthy young people after they... after they recover from even mild COVID. Heart, lung, brain, nervous system. How is your insurance going to react? What's the economic benefit or additional burden that your teachers are going to suffer from, from post-COVID long-hauler syndrome? And thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Next up in the queue, I have Allison Palawi, but I don't have her listed in my phone queue, but I have one unknown number. Allison, by chance, is that you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, is this Allison?
It sure is.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. I'll talk back.
Let's talk mental health. The prime reason the district is telling us we need to open our schools in the middle of the highest peak of this global pandemic is mental health. We can all agree that the ideal place for kids to learn is in schools with their teachers and peers. What we seem to be getting stuck on is the dichotomy of what is most important for our students at this time. Maslow's hierarchy of needs shows that communities must fulfill basic needs before more advanced needs. The most basic needs are physical health and safety. Next is love and belonging, which basically states school provide along with a student's family. During this crisis, it is important for school district leaders to consider these needs when making decisions about the best mode for instructional delivery. Student safety should be the primary determinant in the school-opening decision-making process. At this time, the ASD is unable to provide a transparent plan as to how the health and safety needs of students and staff will be met to allow for the very important mental well-being while in face-to-face school. There have been vague allusions to mitigation plans and structures in place. There is no extra safety equipment or enough staffing to keep within CDC guidelines. There's also no way teachers can spread 20 to 30 students out six feet apart. We all understand that kids need positive social interaction, but being in the classroom now is not going to look or feel like anything resembling healthy or normal. Right now, teachers are trying to get creative. I'm happy we'll set up our classrooms for safety. We're removing most of the furniture, bookshelves, tables, indoor recess games, et cetera. Teachers are rigging up PVC pipes and plastic sheets and tables because classrooms are not equipped to mitigate spread. Individual student kits with materials are being made, and all of this is coming out of teachers' pockets. Or, teachers will not spread out their rooms because they just can't, and then what's the point? Students will stay at their desk or table spot for five hours a day, except for bathroom breaks, hand washing, and recess. There will be no PE, music, art, or health classes to get them out and about. The public has no idea that their students will be so restricted and will find what they thought was going to happen is impossible. Families will be angry that this was not disclosed, and students may still be depressed, but for different reasons, and teachers are going to be burning out from the stress causes. Nine schools in the less populated Massou are closed today, as well as many other schools across the state. ASD-14, the Muldoon Elementary Tutoring Program, and College Jakes YMCA, which has small groups of staff and students, have had to quarantine, close, and cancel events. Consistency and structure are a part of a child's mental health and well-being. Stopping and starting school due to COVID exposure, multiple rounds of quarantining, and eliminating continuity of learning are counterintuitive to our shared goal. Please insist that we wait a few weeks after the holiday season is over, watch the case count, and allow the district time to provide proper safety equipment before we send students and staff back into safer school buildings. During this global crisis, it is critical that the safety, health, and well-being for students and school staff remain the center of attention.
Allison? Thank you. Next up, in person, speaker number 13, Sarah Price. Sarah, you have...
Before I start speaking, I'd just like to note that all present board members, you have a copy of the resolution I'll refer to, and the two members that are still online, you have a virtual copy.
Thank you. You have, and you may begin now.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members and Superintendent. My name is Sarah Price. However, today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Supporting Student Body. Over the last several weeks, myself and fellow students have become disheartened by ASD's response to the pandemic with prolonged school closure. Yet, as time has gone on, there has been no solution. We feel as though high school students' needs have been put as the last priority of the district. Only four days ago, it was announced that you will be attempting to send pre-K through second-grade students back on November 16th, and we believe that high school students who have only a few years, if not months, until our adult lives begin should be given the same opportunity. We understand and acknowledge that this is a circumstance that no school board has dealt with before. However, our current educational conditions are unacceptable. Myself and peer leaders from every high school in the district had developed an in-depth resolution that not only out struggles, but supports them with scientific facts. If the administration is following the science and not the pressure of the teacher unions, then this is the time for action. The issue at hand is one affecting and endangering students, your students. The well-being, mental health, and success for the future is in jeopardy. Although many believe we are simply striving to see our friends again in school, this issue is much larger, as there are children being neglected in their homes. For many kids, an education is the only path to rise above their current socioeconomic position. And heartbreakingly, far more adolescents this year will die of suicide than COVID. The purpose of this resolution is to provide a better, safer education, and we ask you make this the board's number-one priority. We are willing to discuss details and make alterations, but above all, we are requesting that you make this resolution an item to be voted on at the earliest date. I was only permitted three minutes to summarize a topic that is ruining children's lives in more ways than one, so I am unable to read the extensive resolution revising the plan of reopening of high schools in the district. However, we would like to state, the young leaders in your district desire to mend the broken communication between the school board and the high school students through this document, and therefore, by the Supporting Student Body of the Anchorage School District, be it resolved, the school board will fulfill ASD Board Policy 9000 of the school board's primary goal to provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn. Be it resolved, the school board will actively and without deviation abide by ASD Board Policy 5000 to establish policies to provide the best attainable education for the district's students and provide for the physical and mental well-being of their students. Be it resolved, that the school board will in addition to ASD at-home homeschool and ASD virtual, offer all high school students the option of face-to-face learning within a classroom on November 16th onward. I would just like to finish off. Thank you for providing us with this opportunity to voice our grievances. I look forward to hearing from the board on our resolution very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, speaker number 14, Kate Lad. Kate, are you with us this evening? Kate, are you unable to mute your phone? I'm told that maybe *6 works with doing that. All right, come back to you. Next up, speaker number 15, Jessica Falk. Jessica, are you with us tonight?
This is Jessica. Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Falki, and this is the second time I've testified at a school board meeting. Both times I have come before you, I have had significant concerns about the way that the Anchorage School District has handled the safety of my child while he's in district care. Last time, I talked a lot about how important it is for a parent to have trust in educators caring for our children. Anytime you leave your child in the care and control of another individual or organization, trust is of the utmost importance. I am fortunate that I have always had a deep respect and trust for the teachers personally educating my child on the front lines of the Anchorage School District. Unfortunately, my distrust comes from the administrators imposing restrictions and obligations on these teachers on the front lines that impede their abilities to do their jobs safely and effectively. In this unprecedented time, I understand that it is necessary for the boards to make difficult decisions, and being tasked with making difficult decisions, opposition is likely anticipated. I'm sure that you are not surprised by the amount of people standing up and asking for reconsideration of the recent decision for our most vulnerable children to return to school. I am fully cognizant that while there will never be a decision made here in any time that will make every parent, teacher, and community member happy, I firmly believe that it is not your job to make everyone happy, and I'm not here asking you to do that. I do believe it is your job to make decisions that benefit our children to the best that is practically possible under the circumstances. This is why I am confused and very concerned about the recent decision for our most vulnerable children to return to school. I honestly do not understand what problem allowing K-2 students, the students which will have the most difficult time understanding how to safely socially distance, will solve. I can only see the problems that it creates. On a most basic level, allowing only K-2 grade students to return to school demonstrates to me that the district is well aware it is not reasonable or safe for all of our children to return to in-person education at this time. So as a parent with a child in the return-to-school category, I am appalled that my child is scheduled to become the test subject for ASD's plan to return to school. Maybe you think that you have provided options for families that feel the way that I do about returning to school. However, for my son, who is in an HG program at Rogers Park, and for many children of districts in specialized education programs, including charter schools and language programs, we have to make the difficult decision to choose between our children's educational needs and their safety. I strongly believe that you are leveraging my child's education against his safety by requiring him to return to school before it is safe to do so, but not allowing us to have the option to stay virtual and still keep them in the educational programs that they need and deserve. Was that 30 seconds, or was that the end of my time?
You have three more seconds.
Okay, sorry. I'll wrap it up. Obviously, I have a lot more to say, and you've heard from many articulate people about why, but I'm here as one of those people pleading with you to reconsider the decision to have our children to return to school when it is clearly not safe to do so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to circle back around and give Kate Lad an opportunity. Kate, are you able to join us tonight?
Yay, it worked.
Yes, I hear you. Thank you so much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Kate Lad. I'm a parent and elementary teacher. It was jarring to learn of the superintendent's announcement to return without consulting the school board. During a public health emergency, no one person should make the decisions for all of our community. I realize that these are unprecedented times and that there is no policy or language in place to help navigate this terrain. We are asking the school board to create policy regarding pandemics and metrics for returning into in-person schooling. This is absolutely within your means and responsibilities. Metrics previously created gave parameters that were reliable and science-based. Do not give a green light to the superintendent regardless of case count. We must use local data and not cherry pick pediatricians that are concerned with mental health. I also have a master's degree in elementary school counseling, and the narrative that students are suffering so greatly that it's worth the risk is just not accurate. First, kids are resilient. Second, most are doing just fine. All of my students are out and about, playing with friends outside, going to their cousin's houses, movies, et cetera. The affluent families I know have had their own children involved in sports and all kinds of activities. I'm hearing the same from other teachers and friends. Do not let anyone paint a picture that students are locked inside their homes, isolated from the world, because it's not true, and it's also by coming back during the current surge is dangerous because children and families, many families, are not social distancing. This is the time to maintain the continuity of learning that's been established. Students have learned the routines online, and while they're not perfect, they're reaching the majority of the district's students. Teachers have been working so hard to reach, educate, and foster classroom communities. We have cast the largest net possible to reach the most students. What the district needs is to focus on time and resources on the small percentage of students that have fallen through the cracks, but bringing so many back because you're worried about the few during the largest viral surge we've had is nothing short of irresponsible. We should be emphasizing safety and social distancing to our students and families and not contributing to the community's spread. If we return, there'll be a transition period trying to learn and maintain all the new safety protocols, which students won't resemble at all, and once we begin academics, it's inevitable that exposure and transmission will take place. This means closures, classes, and staffing quarantine, who knows how many times, we'll easily be back online. How is this continuity? It is common sense that the appropriate time to return is when the cases begin to decrease. Our state epidemiologist announces alarming different trends, such as 40% increase last week than the previous one, and that we're only catching 1 in 10 positive cases. Projections show that we'll be doubling, Anchorage will be doubling in the next 20 days. Even the military base has moved to the second-highest health protection level of HPCon Charlie. We represent academia. We need to be pragmatic, use critical thinking, and trust science. I implore the school board to act. Not to think about politics or their relationship with Bishop, the school board can make lasting changes for the next pandemic. The district will have policies and metrics and language in place on how to navigate decisions with the superintendent. For now, let the continuity that was established continue. Make an action plan on how to reach those students of real concern, and I urge you to make a motion to vote and deny the current plan and then create a policy and a better plan with data-driven parameters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have speaker number 16, Michelle McGuire. Michelle, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you so much for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
My name is Michelle McGuire. I am a concerned mom of three kids enrolled in ASD schools. I also work for the ASD in a life skills classroom. I'll start by asking, why are we being sent back to classrooms when numbers are rising? The total numbers of cases in Alaska since the pandemic began are 11,393. Over 6,000 of those numbers are in Anchorage. More than 240 new cases statewide on the past 26 days, which is 37% of total cases in seven months. So in the last 26 days, Anchorage has had nearly 2,400 new cases, or roughly 56% of all cases in Alaska. We are far and above high risk, according to both previous and current matrix level systems used by the ASD. When did foundational skills become more important than another's life? When did foundational skills become more important than mental health? Data shows a significant increase in mental health issues amongst middle and high school students. Shouldn't that be considered a more pressing issue versus foundational skills? All kids need face-to-face school. Who determined that from preschoolers to second graders and self-contained life skills, students are more adaptable to the necessary health and safety protocol, quote-unquote? Wouldn't higher-grade students be more adaptable, given that they know and understand what a virus is, and this one is killing and crippling people in our community? Parents are historically known for sending kids to school when they're sick. Will parents know the difference between a common cold, flu, or coronavirus? Will they send their kids in anyways because they have to go to work? What about the asymptomatic people out there walking in our community, spreading this virus like a wildfire? How do we know that asymptomatic students and staff members aren't going to walk through our doors and rock our worlds, and not in a good way, with unbeknownst continued spread of this killer virus? We can wear masks and wash our hands all day, but we in life skills will not be able to keep our distance. We'll be very lucky if we can keep these kids with masks on sometime of the day and their hands off their face and mouth. Don't you know there is spit saliva and other bodily fluids flying everywhere in a self-contained spread classroom? Why are we playing Russian roulette with our community and staff's lives? Some people in the community, and some of these students already have pre-existing health conditions. Some will die. Some will have long-term effects associated with contracting COVID. Is that not more important than foundational skills? We should finish the second quarter at home where it's safe. That will give us time to socially distance ourselves and help lower the spread in case numbers in our community. We should wait till January when we'll have a more definite answer about a vaccine. We miss our students and wish to be back in the classrooms with them, but only when it's safe. How can such intelligent people with this immense power think that foundational skills are more important than my life, my kid's life, and my colleagues' life? Our lives are in your hands.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 17, Mandy McConnell. Mandy, are you with us tonight?
Yes. Hello?
Thank you very much for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Dr. Bishop and members of the school board. My name is Mandy McConnell, and I'm a parent of two children in ASD and also a 14-year teacher within the district. I'm speaking today regarding my concerns about the safety of sending our staff and students to face-to-face learning during a pandemic when the cases of COVID-19 continue to rise at all-time highs. Each week since the end of September, I have known at least one ASD student or staff member that had to be tested for COVID-19 and had to quarantine, and we are not even in the face-to-face format. Luckily, we are online. Students are still able to attend Zoom classes. Classmates did not have to quarantine or get tested, and staff are still able to teach. Classmates did not have to quarantine or get tested, and staff are still able to teach. Imagine if we were face-to-face during all this. Parents will be scrambling to find last-minute care or frantically finding someone to cover their shift at work so they can quarantine and watch for symptoms, or maybe driving their whole family to get tested. Teachers, while also concerned about the safety of themselves and their family members, are now scrambling to put care out online and prepare their live Zoom lessons with the materials they have at home. The lessons I teach are not thrown together in a few minutes before class. It takes time to prepare and be organized. The disruption we are replacing on families and educators is huge. We know the holidays are coming up. I can guarantee that although it is high-risk, there will be kids going trick-or-treating. This is all before we are set to return pre-K to second grade and special education students on November 16th. Who is going to educate those that now have to quarantine? There will no longer be live Zoom classes or recorded lessons for students to access. If the family is quarantining, who is going to pick up their paperwork that they are going to miss? The next holiday is Thanksgiving, which is eight short student contact days away from when we are set to return. Now, families will be put in a situation where they have to choose to put their kids in school for those handful of days before the holidays and sacrifice spending it with extended family of whom they have included in our bubbles. Their grandmas and grandpas will now be alone for Thanksgiving, and it does end there. They return their only 14 student contact days until they go on winter break, which could be spent in quarantine at home, hopefully without symptoms. And then there goes celebrating the winter holiday with family. Grandma and grandpa again will be alone for another family holiday. Taking into account the high transmission rate in our community should be a huge portion of your decision-making because it affects everyone's safety. We do not get to choose to be the lucky one and be asymptomatic. We know you can't guarantee our safety, but what you need to think about is why this risk? Why this time? And what will the real cost be to our students, staff, and community? By bringing students and staff back before mitigation strategies are correctly and consistently followed, you are lowering our safety standards and risking the safety of our students, staff, and community. It's your job to keep us all safe. Please don't make this impossible for us. Instead, partner with us to maintain distance learning, and together we can keep all of us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, speaker number 8, Paige. Mitchell, are you with us this evening?
Yeah, this is Mitchell.
Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
I want to address two issues with my time today. First, an emerging theme around school reentry is student mental health. Have you considered that putting students back into school is going to make this worse, not better? I'm also thinking about students that live with elderly grandparents or high-risk family members or in unique living situations that will be significantly impacted by coronavirus. What happens when a student gives a high-risk family member coronavirus? Where will they live if their only viable option is taken by COVID-19? Will students really have better mental health when they are constantly reminded that they are at risk for getting sick? They will see peers and staff with masks, shields, and other PPE? They will have so many new restrictions to what they can do at school. What kind of new social taboos are going to come from mitigation strategies and students following or not following them? The result of the decline in mental health is due to students living in a global pandemic. It's not, it's not just school that is affected by this. Their entire lives. The stress and the worry that they're experiencing is not going to go away when they're put back into school. In some cases, it's going to get worse. Second, I've recently been transferred into a fifth-six combo class in a Title I school. The reason I mention this is because during my transition this week, I've had the opportunity to participate in two colleague Zoom classes, and they are absolutely crushing it. There is almost 100% attendance. Students are engaged, and there is extra support time offered throughout the day for those who need it. I know that virtual learning has its drawbacks. We are also experiencing successes. Teachers are going above and beyond to reach all their students online. We can find solutions to online struggles. We do find solutions to online struggles. Students have entered the online learning environment. They are getting used to their new normal. What's going to be the impact if schools open and then have to close again because of coronavirus outbreaks? Will students receive educational opportunities when their teacher is in quarantine or taking sick leave due to coronavirus and there is no sub? The in-school experience that is being explained to me in staff meetings and email documents doesn't sound too different than what is happening online. Other than being physically present in school, the restrictions because of COVID are going to make learning in the classroom strikingly familiar to online learning. How much interaction can a teacher really have with a student in a socially-distanced, COVID-mitigated environment? Will instruction in this environment really be superior to what is happening online? I desperately want to greet students in the morning, put on the latest Kids Bop song, walk around and give handshakes, high fives, and waves, and say good morning. I can't wait to be interrupted by a chatty student in my math lesson. The reality is this can't happen until this pandemic is under control. Face-to-face school and a high-risk model is not going to look like school. It's going to be full of strict rules, health risks, and anxiety, which is not a good environment to learn. For the time being, while COVID remains high-risk, let's choose safety. Let's continue to find solutions to the problems that some are experiencing with online learning and follow the guidance of our risk matrix.
Mitchell, thank you very much. Next up is speaker number 19, Marnie Hertel. Marnie, are you with us tonight?
Hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm speaking as an individual, and I'm strongly opposed to reopening schools now. You may recall my letter last month in regards to the Q Student Information System and Canvas LMS. It insirs hope that we can improve communication with families by using a more robust student information system. How many students and parents had difficulty with Q? Not providing accurate grades and information? Not syncing data correctly? Not providing an easy-to-read school schedule? ASD needs to adopt a better student information system. When we are leaning so heavily on distance learning, we need reliable applications, not antiquated and inept tools. I want to invite you to take out a pen and write this down. Please see this research at bit.ly/schooltechplans. In addition to poorly-designed tools like Q Information System, Canvas LMS also falls short and lets our students down. They need a stable, simple platform that allows them to turn in their Google Doc assignments without finicky code glitches. Thousands of higher-performing school districts across the nation use Google Classroom, and they don't have to pay for it. Neither does their state. I was told by Senator Geisler that the state of Alaska is sponsoring LMS at the rate of $1.5 billion in CARESAC funding. What happens when that funding runs out? More importantly, why are we using Canvas LMS at grades three through eight? Canvas LMS is far too complicated and incredibly cumbersome for younger students to use. For example, when a student looks at our Canvas course homepage, she has a choice of clicking on 27 different links or buttons. In Google Classroom, only seven. Canvas makes a feeble attempt to offer, quote-unquote, "elementary theme." Nope, still 27 links. It merely changes all fonts to Comic Sans. The makers of Canvas have no clue how to make web design appropriate for a third grader. In Canvas enrollment settings, the page refers to, quote-unquote, "your university." I'm teaching seventh graders. There was never a pilot study done at ASD to measure the efficacy of using Canvas LMS in any grade level below high school. Here we are again, district administration making three decisions without any clue about how this will impact the learning of students. Why did ASD choose Canvas? To improve student learning? Or to package a preloaded script of overpriced third-party curriculum? Last quarter, the Springboard Online eBook was so incompatible and ineffective with Canvas that it proved to be a detriment to my students' learning progress. If I had designed my own lessons and ignored the Springboard disaster, my students would have made significant gains in reading and writing. Instead, my students and I struggle with Canvas assignment submission issues, which frequently fail to function. Let me wrap up by saying, please allow a few elementary and middle schools to do a comparison study using Google Classroom for instruction instead of Canvas. I would be most elated to join this pilot program and engage in sharing reflections, shortcomings, and professional development to benefit others. Let's simplify. Let us teach. Also, let's use common sense and not rush to open schools when community spread is at an all-time high. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the Q 20, Laura Wren. Laura, are you with us this evening? Laura, are you able to unmute? All right, we'll circle back around. Um, I'm going to go to speaker number 21, Erica Jones. Erica, are you with us tonight?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So we've heard a lot about the health and safety concerns of teachers and parents and staff going back to the school building. As for myself, I also would like to talk about those concerns. As much as I would love to return to teaching in person, teaching virtually is just about the hardest, most hardest thing we have ever done. And I teach special education in grade school. It's hard. This is harder. I would rather take my hardest kid all day, five of them, please, than this. This is so hard. But it needs to be done safely and with the correct CPE and safety measures. I have huge concerns about this CPE and the safety measures that were just being given to us. I did some research on everything that we are to be using, and there's huge, massive concerns. The first is a concern about the gloves. We were told, and it's online, that we were to be given nitro gloves to not only protect us from exposure to the virus, but also from exposure to the cleaning chemicals and any blood-borne pathogens that we may be exposed to during our day. However, instead of nitro gloves, we received vinyl gloves. I'm sad to say that upon researching vinyl gloves, I found that they are not chemical resistant, smoke chemicals. They are permeable to blood-borne pathogens and are prone to leakage. This is what we were given to you. Next, I have a concern about the disinfecting solution that we've been provided. We are currently using PureTub at a dilution rate of 1,076 parts per million. This is the dilution rate suitable for killing viruses and bacteria. However, it is not the dilution rate that is recommended for students safe surfaces within no wrench requirements. That level is a beer, 100 parts per million. All preschool and elementary students will be eating lunch in that classroom, meaning that all tables and desks aren't vast food surfaces. Nowhere on the PureTub website does it say that it is safe for food surfaces without wrenching at a 1,076 parts per million. The website also specifically states that in order to be effective, it needs to sit for a time of at least 10 minutes. We were told that we can spray, let sit for a brief time, the time it takes to spray all the desks and tables, about three minutes max, and then wipe to dry, so kids are not sitting at wet desks and chairs. Not 10 minutes. We are supposed to spray tables, chairs, other surfaces every time we have a group change before we eat, or in preschool, every time we change from one area of the room to another, as preschool does not have assigned seats, and everybody desires all areas of the classroom. My last concern that I would like to address, but by far not my last concern overall, is class sizes. By my measurements and my school, each classroom can only hold a mass of 16 students at six feet apart. And this is with eight of the students sitting so close to the wall that they're touching it. We have classrooms with 27-plus kids in each of them. Some of these kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms. I have to be honest, with this tiered system of reentry in the building, I feel that pre-K through second grade students and teachers are being used as guinea pigs to see if it's safe for the older students to come back.
Erica?
Yep.
Sorry, time is up. Thank you. I'd like to just quick circle back around to Laura Wren. She's our last speaker in this public testimony. Laura, are you with us tonight? As a reminder, star six will unmute you if you're there. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on, keep our agenda going. But I will circle back around and make this person first up on the second block of public testimony later tonight. So we are going to move on in our agenda. Written public testimony, just making sure all board members and the public know that out on board docs attached to our agenda is a lot more written board testimony out there, you know, for folks to read. So just encourage folks to go out and see what is out there. Next up, our superintendent update. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bishop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and board, those who testified, as well as those who are present here who testified as well. I want to share with you the resolve about the situation for which myself and the team here wants to share an update. I want you to know that in regard to being a single person, yes, I am the superintendent, but I am acting with a group of highly-educated professionals from aides and teachers in our classroom to executives in their different jobs. And it is my job to recommend to the board the best knowledge and thinking. And I do fully recognize, as does our team, that Anchorage is in the highest risk level for transmission. I also understand that this virus is with us for a long time. And knowing the needs of our students and our mission to educate and the knowledge that we have, not only here in Anchorage, but that's also been evidenced in other large cities. Just yesterday, New York Times and Washington Post shared the successes in New York public schools with 1,800 schools with mitigation techniques that work when children can come back. There's been an understanding, or maybe perhaps we don't know enough, or the decision changes. We are acting on present data and present information and new knowledge as we know it. This isn't a guinea pig session. This isn't anything like that. It is utilizing knowledge to move forward as a district, similar to how our community has. Take a look at our hospitals. Last year, everything was shut down, any kind of elective, surgery, the like, because we just didn't know. We didn't know about the spread of the virus. It was too new. With the new learning and the science and the mitigation, we now have practices that were once stopped in an absolute lockdown, hunker-down, whatever we call it of our city, have now resumed. And I would like to tell you that if our restaurants, our daycares, our gyms, our office, our hospitals can now operate with safe mitigation, I want to tell you that our employees are some of the most educated employees in our city. I have faith and confidence in what they can do. We have an opt-in option for getting students back. If our families feel that this is not what they can do, we have a program, and our virtual program is going to teach daily at daily times for parents that would like that. ASD cannot be everything for everyone. I could not ask our teachers to teach all day long in two systems. Now, we're studying some cameras in the classroom and some other things, but the data from other places, that puts a very taxing toll on teachers. We want to do a good job opening school for K-2 students or pre-K through 2 students. They are vulnerable in the sense that they are not independent learners. It does take a great deal of direction and support to educate a young person, and we offer that. We do those things. It also is understood about screen time for students. We are all concerned about that, not only for the young, but also as we get older for ourselves. We know the dangers behind screen time. This board has voted in its budget time and time again to put the best teacher-to-student ratio with its youngest students. We have the best of having small class sizes in pre-K through 2. Given the research that 30, sometimes upwards of 40% of families may choose to stay home until a vaccine is found and available publicly, our classrooms then would be even smaller. We have asked for students, or for teachers, rather, to go through their classrooms, and yes, there might be desks against a wall. But I want to let you know, I was a teacher who did not teach in a school at one time in my career. in my career, that had a music teacher, that had an art teacher, that had a PE teacher. That was me. I had a college education. I knew how to get information, I knew how to plan a lesson. We can all do that. Kids will have those opportunities, and those will be expectations. It was absolutely appropriate for a teacher to say, you know what, we're going to work on this, instead of, you know, the reading and the writing arithmetic. So guaranteed that, will it look the same from whence we've come? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We cannot have the mitigation techniques and then have it look the same. It is not a carte blanche opening where freedom to do whatever, absolutely not for children. The mitigation and the safety protocols are paramount. It is a measured movement back into school. We are doing our best and leading with the greatest amount of clarity as we can. This move to K2 was not a secret until it was brought up. It was actually vetted through many different groups. It was shared by principals with their staffs themselves before being given. So the communication, we want to talk to the people who are affected the most at the time, and that was the goal. We will continue to send out bi-monthly communications or bi-weekly communications, letters in the inside. The work is there. We have time planned off for teachers, and I'm going to ask Mark to go in that in a little bit to actually address the specifics. What we have learned from studying other school districts and the success for people who work in the system is to be involved in the problem solving at their schools. That's essential. There are protocols set up. It's actually a 10-page document of everything that needs to be checked off prior to opening. And we did this for our reading programs. The protocols and standards are there, as well as exemplars, seven already finished that were approved. Buildings utilize their leadership teams of teachers and other educators in the building to review those, and they can look at someone else's on their building, cut and paste if it works, or design their own system that meets the standard of mitigation. We have to own our behaviors as we move forward, and that's the goal. We have to acknowledge, I agree that this year has been the toughest on every probably person in our organization, especially the teachers. It is not a lack of work or time or effort that we continue to have some concerns about the education that's happening. It's just a pandemic. But the understanding that if we could offer, similar to other school districts, face-to-face schooling that can assist in meeting the needs of our families and our children who are out there, who are asking for it, I'd like to do that. I would like to put forward, and I have put forward, a very strategic plan with safety features in it. They are not a secret. They are not, they are very transparent. Because we need not only our teachers, but our parents ending the expectations of what even a no symptom policy looks like. What does that look like? Our teachers need to know that if there is a symptom in a child, it will be addressed immediately. Our nurses have been working in groups to articulate that, to have processes and protocols to train our staff. They have also worked on looking at rapid testing and looking into sourcing that. So this is even beyond just simple, you know, classroom routines. And I want to share that with the knowledge that I understand the trepidation, and I understand fear and how it's communicated, and that ASD is here. Our school principals especially, to really provide the support necessary to teach, to assist, whatever it is that we need to do, our educators to be a part of this solution for our students in moving forward. With that, I just want to share too, that the criticisms about shutting down when you work in the system are actually a testament to how serious we take the mitigation techniques. We have had eight weeks of sports, and when they played sports in the exercise, they did not all have masks that would be depending on the sport. Eight weeks of high school students participating, thousands of them, in ASD, without a single viral spread in our sport. Did the virus? Absolutely, because it's in the community and our kids are part of the community. It came to us. We had volleyball team. A student played volleyball and didn't know that she was asymptomatic, didn't know until a family test two days later. She had played in a tournament. The teams were quarantined out of safety and mitigation. That's what happens. That is part of the mitigation plan, not a failure, a success. We have had of anyone, and the research demonstrates this, and it would be true for us as well, the virus comes to us from adults generally, and that's in our system now. We had someone, a teacher, share that we don't necessarily need to be worth mental health, because they're at parties, birthday parties, they're going bowling, they're going to the movies. There was written testimony to the board of that effect. The evidence demonstrates that the routine in schools actually assists in the mitigation in the community. Dr. Zink, in working with us, explained this. If you were to think of your viral ability or whatever spread as your budget, and you knew you only had so much to spend in so different places, I would believe that going to school would be one of those things that you would do in a community, that going to school would be where you would take your chances, not at the bowling alleys, not at the movie theaters, not at the sleepovers, and not at the birthday parties. Those are going on because we don't, we're not, we're humans, we're not going to stay locked in our homes for seven months. That's an understanding. We're out and about. With mitigation, hopefully we're out and about. The students who have an ability to have small class sizes, absolutely follow directions, all our youngest ones. So the need for them academically meets the need that their small classrooms meets the need that the younger ones, although our older ones love their teachers too, the younger ones have a better ability to follow those rules for mitigation. It's not all or nothing. This is part of the recommendation from Dr. McLaughlin and Dr. Zink, Dr. Olson, and Dr. Chandler, that if ASD were to go back in the highest rate, that we'd it in, working with those that are most vulnerable. The students who don't have necessarily the age-appropriate self-efficacy or self-awareness and timing. We have students that receive services in classrooms that are more self-contained, such as cross-categorical, extended resource, life skills, school-based behavior, support, and structured learning. Those were the students, as well as Whaley School. And that school was recommended by educators in that school. The principal and teachers came forward and said, we have to do better for our students. Can we be a school that opens? It's an approach, the understanding of our young people, and the knowledge behind what we're doing. It's not an experiment. We have reading programs, Camp Fire, YMCA, all going on in our schools right now. When we shut them down, it is specifically for mitigation. It is to do things right. When we asked about the disruption, other school districts, as well as Dr. Zink, shared the same thing. Two weeks connecting with my children, I didn't think, and this is from educators, connecting with children is worth a semester of shutdown if I could have taken it. I wouldn't have gone back, even though the trepidation was there, that the connections with students is what carried this through. Was there fear? Absolutely, and people demonstrate their fear differently. I'm saying we should all have a healthy respect for this virus. Fear isn't going to get us anywhere, even in our personal lives. Having a respect and an understanding about the knowledge about how to operate is a responsible thing to do for the young people to meet our mission. I regret this for so long. Mark, can you fill in just some of the details?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So as most of you are aware, the announcement has gone out that our in-person learning for our young students and many of our vulnerable students in terms of some of our special needs classes will begin on November 16th is the plan. That includes some of those special education classes that were mentioned. As you already heard, we have multiple sites up and running, and our elementary principals are also in the throes of putting together other tutoring plans for their schools. And so the planning is continuing. So the first due date I would share is the principals and their leadership teams are due to turn in their planning document that Dr. Bishop referred to. It's a 10-page document, it's very thorough. We have had exemplars already turned in from our tutoring groups, but it includes over 40 some categories that they have to work through in terms of mitigation. For example, just the arrival and dismissal has 16 different pieces where they have to turn in, pieces that have to do with the car and the bus stops, the drop-off, staff arrivals, etc. There's all these different interaction points. There, they have to put together a small plan with regards to how they're going to mitigate every one of those pieces. As far as movements, there's seven different categories that include everything from, how do we do hydration when the drinking fountains aren't running because we have to get our hydration in other ways? How do we do the hallway pattern for distribution, restrooms, etc. As far as the classroom environment, there's 12 different categories of mitigation that they're looking through. There's everything from sanitation to seating to how do you handle materials, 12 different areas that they look at for that. As far as the staff activities, how do we do staff meetings? How do we do, what's the rules in the lounge where people normally gather and socialize and eat? How do we do that? Different COVID response things have been put together by our health officials and so on. My point to all this is that all of our students, our schools that have already got tutoring sites have already done that. In addition, every principal will be able to see every other school's plan, so they'll be able to see how different it is. Every facility is shaped different, every staffing arrangements are different, all the schools, despite these requirements, they all have unique ways that they'll have to meet them. So what we've done is we have provided as a district the requirements, the examples, exemplars, and then they go and provide customization. And the point I want to make is back to Dr. Bishop's referral about some of the research around the country, is that our principals are being asked to do this with their leadership teacher teams in the school, so that they would be able to provide input to that. The requirements are required, but how you implement those can be unique to that school based on the input from the staff and people that are on the leadership team. So another piece to this that's being put into place this week is we're finalizing a parent survey that will be pushed out by principals to just the returning families and students to that school. So for example, even though we've noticed that it's pre-K through 2, we have schools that have combo classrooms where there's second and third graders. In those schools, the third graders would be included with that classroom to keep them together as a unit. So that survey will go out to all of the students who are expected to be open to returning on the 16th. That will go out hopefully on Friday. Principals are given four or five different options for how to do that, whether they wish to have teachers push that out, whether they're going to do it directly from the principal to the parents directly, whether they'll do it through a parent night on Zoom, whether they'll do it from a teacher providing a classroom session for their students. Each school will figure out how they wish to push that information out. Our project planning deadline, and there are literally hundreds of people working on many different pieces of this that are funneling all these pieces up to our executive teams. That project managing deadline is November the 2nd for all of that to be done. The elementary teachers will have up to three days of what we call asynchronous time, where their lessons will not, the live Zoom lessons will cease for those days, and those teachers will have those three days for them to be able to be at the building, working with their principals, trying to sort through all the details for training, because every school principal and leadership team will be responsible to provide the training pieces to their staff on all of these mitigation pieces. And so that's the update on the planning, and so we are definitely on track for this if all things stay the way they are today.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. And I'll be quickly wrapping up this. I just felt it necessary to spend the time to really share with the board the information that is out there. And just, we always launch with good things in the school district. I want to celebrate again, I mentioned this, but again, congratulations to Eagle Academy Charter School, only one of two schools in the state that is a blue ribbon school. So that is an outside queried honor at the national level. Schools don't get to apply for it, they are selected. So this is a high honor, and I personally went out there and congratulated Eagle Academy Charter School staff. They're at the building, working, working, working diligently. Also, this is, I hope you enjoy this next piece. I want to personally thank our school leaders on this Principal Appreciation Week, Principal Appreciation Day. All of October is the month, as member Bellamy had shared at our last meeting. And this was a special tribute to them, to let them know that really, not just in the schools, but around the city, we appreciate them. And I would like, it would honor them and honor me as well, if I could show this video
Our staff, students, and families are lucky to have such committed and caring building leadership. On behalf of the entire school board, we want to say thank you to all of our amazing principals. You make ASD great.
We at Kukila Tribal Council are so very grateful to you, our school leaders, for your incredible resilience, innovation, and hard work in caring for our young people during this unprecedented time. Schools play such a critical role in our community, educating our children and preparing them for the future. In addition, for many children, it is also a critical safety net where our kids receive a hot meal and a safe place to learn. Thank you for your care, and we are so grateful. Thank you for your care, and we are so grateful for our partnership here at CITC.
Hello, wonderful ASD principals. My name is Diane Kaplan. I'm president of the Rosewood Center. I want to thank you on behalf of all of our families for the great work you're doing helping our kids in this very, very tough time. I know that everyone in our town appreciates you. Thanks so much.
Hello, everyone. This is Bill Pop with the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation. On behalf of our members and the business community of Anchorage, thank you so much for what you do as principals in our schools and our community. You're doing vital work, and we deeply appreciate all of your hard work on behalf of the city of Anchorage.
In Alaska, principals are not just school leaders, they are community leaders. During COVID, principals in Anchorage have been on the front lines, outmaneuvering the virus so that students can receive an excellent education. Thank you. Thank you to all the principals who show up early, stay late, and never give up. We appreciate you and the example you set for all Alaskans.
This is Anchorage Fire Chief Jody Hetrick with a huge thank you to all the Anchorage School District principals for taking care of our kids, your staff, and your schools during this bizarre year. You have all taken this opportunity to exercise leadership, strength, and compassion in service to your staff and children, and our department is proud to stand with you for the long haul.
Hello, I'm Bruce Bustamante, President and CEO of the Anchorage Chamber of Commerce. And during National Principals Week, I want to extend my thank you to the principals within the Anchorage School District for the great work that they do in providing education for our young people. So on behalf of the chamber, the young people in Anchorage, and the parents of those young people, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, principals, for all of the amazing things you do every day for Anchorage's children.
Hey, principals, this is Sergeant Rain Reynolds with the SRO program over at APD. We just want to let you know that we guys appreciate you. We appreciate the relationship that we have with you guys and your willingness to work with Anchorage Police. And we so appreciate that you guys allow our SROs into your house. So we appreciate you guys and keep up the good work.
Principals, I am forever amazed, the sheer volume of work that you get done in a day. Our community can never thank you enough for all the things you do for our children. Thanks.
Elementary principals, this is Dan Barker. I wanted to take a moment and share with you folks that I hope that your Principal Appreciation Day and Month, and from my perspective, year goes as well as it possibly can in every possible way. You folks are the backbone of what we do, and I certainly could never even dream of doing my job without you. Thanks so much for what you do, and have a great Principal Appreciation Day.
Principals, this is Kirsten Johnson Stremler, the Senior Director of Secondary Education. During Principal Appreciation Month, I commend you for the tremendous work you have accomplished throughout these uncertain and unprecedented times. None of us anticipated the administrative hurdles and challenges we are experiencing in education today. However, your advocacy for what is best for your students has never wavered. Thank you for staying grounded in the work of education and meeting the needs of your community through difficult times and for always putting student needs first, even though you are also dealing with uncertainty in your personal lives. I am so proud to work alongside all of our principals in ASD and want to send you a heartfelt thank you for all of your dedication.
Good day. This is Governor Dunleavy. And I want to thank all of the principals in the state of Alaska, including those in the Anchorage School District for all of the hard work that you do. As a former principal myself, former assistant principal, director and superintendent, I know how difficult this job can be, but I also know how important your job is. You're on the front lines. You're the ones that make sure the schools run. You're the ones that make sure that parents and students get the education that they need. And I want to thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart and sincere for taking on this task. And I want to recognize the job that you're doing. Take care and good luck this year.
ASD principals, this is Dina Bishop. Thank you. Mic drop.
Madam President, that concludes my speech. And a very fantastic job our principals do. And, and we pulled this out for something special for them to let them know that not just internally, but externally, they're thought of well. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so I see two hands raised in the queue. I don't know if board members would like to take the opportunity to ask back to school questions right now or if we want to save it for the non-action item that we traditionally do for all the back to school stuff? If that would be the will of the board to keep the agenda moving? I'm getting head nods here. Andy and Dave, did you have a specific question relative to the superintendent report? Or are you okay saving your back to school questions for the non-action item? So that when we open it up, we can just keep it rolling?
I do have a number of questions specific to it. You know, since it's fresh, I feel like this is a good time.
All right, we'll get you two questions. Go ahead.
Okay. First, I think something that's on a lot of people's mind. You know, in the first couple of planned openings, we had thresholds that let people know above, you know, below this, we're good to go, above this, we're not. Is there any kind of threshold or limit that would cause us to waive off the opening on November 16th?
Thank you, Member Holloman. That's a great question. And certainly what's come about since the beginning of this, remember those metrics were part of the medical health and part of the hunker down and understanding. As we move forward, even with AEA president had a map today where a lot of Alaska is in the highest, yet we are traveling, we are going to restaurants, we are utilizing the risk mitigation techniques to be able to do in a very small, it's certainly not 100%, but in a small amount and a small percentage to continue to do the mission of whether, whatever sector it's in, whether it's the medical sector, the travel sector, you know, restaurant and entertainment sector, as well as schools. So there isn't any, it's, it's utilizing the data to know where we are. I would say that our risk and understanding what we'll have to do is more in our own risk matrix of mitigating any kind of spread, that when we do know of a case, that we take time off, that we ensure that contract tracing is done, contract caution is done, and that a cleaning is done. Those closures that we have talked about in other cities are essential to the mitigation. And to know the education doesn't just stop during that time. That's why we did utilize Canvas that was selected by AEA members in conjunction with the district. So that was really led in conjunction. I know that there's some concerns by some teachers about it, but it was a, that actually was a collective agreement to utilize those canvases that students, we can turn around and have education at home and move it to school. If we have to go back home, we already know how to do that. We might, you know, need a day or two to pick up where our lessons are, but that we can. The latest in really understanding that there's no black and white to the virus is certainly thinking about those that the WHO and the CDC, as well as local doctors, find also important. What kind of matrix and numbers do we put on the other health concerns of children? And I think that's the balancing act. So I wish I could give a golden number. I don't think we have that. Maybe in the future, there will be one there as recommended by our state medical professionals, but at this time, there really isn't. Thank you.
And if I can follow up on that, I've got a bunch of questions, but one more for right now. At, at the building level, when teachers are planning with principals about mitigation and what's safe in a given room, do we have some limits such that a teacher can say, okay, this, this room can have 25 kids in it, but, but no more if we're following these certain standards? Are there boundaries in terms of how close kids can be seated or how close they'll be?
Really, I'm glad you brought that up. Absolutely. That's why the planning has been extended so that teachers can really have each one assessed. We are looking at having classes possibly now in schools, in libraries, in gym areas, in multipurpose rooms, music rooms, art rooms, utilizing spaces that are the size that we need. That's essentially true, and actually a reason rather, why we're taking a student-to-student, parent-to-parent, family-to-family assessment of their choices of opting in or staying on an online program so that we have the exact numbers so that teachers can plan and that students, when they come back, they'll have their desks with their names on it all planned out. So yes, utilizing the, the space by the CDC, as well as utilizing different spaces around the school for larger and smaller class sizes. But the exact data on those have not come through. They'll come through in this next week. Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Member Donley. Two questions if you have to.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. I was curious about what form of accommodations we're making for staff that may have specific health conditions or, like myself, are in their 60s, which makes them more vulnerable to the COVID pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Donley. And so we'll turn that over to our HR Director, Matt Teefert, who would like to take a chance to answer that.
Through the President, to Mr. Member Donley. Yes, there, there are a couple of different approaches. If a particular staff person has a, what they believe to be a qualifying disability under the Americans with Disabilities Act, there's a process through the Office of Equity and Compliance for an accommodation request. That process is managed by those staff. There are also, of course, potential leave provisions that could apply depending on the staff members' circumstances, and those will be managed through the benefits office. So it really is a case-by-case assessment driven by the, initially by the individual employee's interest in what sort of accommodation or leave accommodation they may be seeking.
Thank you.
Member Donley, did you have one more question?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Back into the boardroom, Member Bellamy, up to two questions.
My first one, this has to do with what have we learned from our reading program? Because it's been going on now like three weeks, and I haven't heard of any, any situations. And then what have we learned from our sports program? In terms of, and how did that impact, fit into the plan?
Yep, that's, those are great questions. And part of that, and, and seeking to do those things because they were, you hear the reluctance in our staff voices. And, and those were programs that we had other adults and teachers share differently, that they're ready to come back, that they want to do something. And the first was sports within the first couple of weeks of school that came through. And thousands of students, lots of different teams. We did learn that mitigation works, communication absolutely within a team, and setting the standards for expectations is a must. We also learned that COVID is present everywhere. And so we, we set up our notification system, as you know, online. We demonstrated last board meeting, anyone can go online and put a COVID case in. If they hear it, most are given by nurses because most staff and students report to a nurse or to a principal about it. So we immediately get the information and begin the contact tracing to know who was in proximity. Generally, what happens, people don't know that they have COVID. They haven't experienced any symptoms. And they, what's happened, and generally just from our experience, is that a day or two later, they will go, my parent, most is contact, a close contact of a case. My dad came home and has a positive case. So I, but I was at a practice week, or I was at the reading last week. We immediately report that. It goes to our team here, our safety team, where they look into the mitigation. All the people who were in that classroom or that team are notified, and a determination is made in regard to who was in close contact. Our first case happened really in the summer, a couple, a couple of weeks after sports started. And it was a coach who caught it, you know, from the outside, brought it here. We had to determine whom did that coach talk to? And luckily, it was the beginning of the season. He was not out doing, you know, the work with the kids. He actually had contact with other coaches. And so that group of students was, or that group of adults was quarantined. And we do take that absolutely seriously, the quarantine of 14 days or those two negative tests a week apart from each other. And so we do have an ability to come back, but generally people are quarantining because we can't have, we want absolutes and understanding about the risk levels. We have asked people to isolate if they received a COVID test themselves. But in all cases, with our children's teams, we have not had, whether it's in the reading or sports, we haven't had kids spread it to, to kids while they're playing on the field. What we have had and reported is a child catching it from another child, especially at the high school level, in their sleepovers and in their home gatherings. And that is likened, and you hear that in the news as well, that as folks in their social lives have expanded their bubbles, that that is the biggest risk level. Because we go in those bubbles without masks, we don't think about the distancing. But when we come to school, do the sports, it's always in a more formal fashion. We come to the boardroom in a much formal fashion than we do those other things. And so we use those mitigation techniques. I don't know if we'll continue with that evidence. We may have a case in a school where students are with each other. I don't know. We don't have a prediction. But we do know that eight weeks of sports has not had a super-spreader event or been a viral vortex of a spread, as well as with our reading. We've also know that adults, that are employees, come to us with COVID unknowingly. And we have to adapt and react. Thank you. I'll get one more. Okay, I see how you merged those two. Go ahead.
That was just one. Thank you. My next question has to do with our protocols, our safety protocols. You know, I keep, I keep hearing employees talk about paper towel, paper towels that are, do not absorb. I, I don't know what, I don't know about that, but it's apparently important to them. And I guess I just wanted to know, how are we, how are we training everybody on what the proper protocols are?
Those are two great questions. And I had, they are, no, 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 they are connected. They're coupled. So that was only one question. I go for one question. Actually, while I was speaking, one of the thing, you know, when you have one of those shout-outs. Actually, while I was speaking, one of the things, you know, when you have one of those shout-outs, one of the things we did learn was about the training. And while we have, and I'll have Dr. Stock talk about this training and how that's happening, but what we did learn is that we have the protocols for distancing, washing, hand-washing masks. One of the things that we had to work on and then look at, one was initially the water. That was brought up in the reading. They learned about, kids can't use that. What if they forget from home? We can't have cups every day. How do we keep kids hydrated? So we worked through those issues, and those are in our plan. But also the handling of materials and not mixing them, because we receive papers from kids and then we want to put them in a pile. That's muscle memory. And so we really had to go over time and time again, whether it was with the footballs and different things, that everything had to be cleaned afterwards. We have to pay attention to who's in a room and who's not. Those types of things, like restaurants have to write down who visits. We really had to get good at those little small things to make this work. So there were additional learnings, member Bellamy. But in regard to training and the mass training, Dr. Stock, can you share that?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So we've got a whole group of trainings that are being put together. These are being recorded. They're being videoed together in packages. They arrange from all parts of the mitigation strategies, everything from mask wearing and all these other pieces, hand washing and all those things. Many of them are done. Those are all going to be put together and also put into portfolio and folders on our website for parents. And then we'll start pushing out that training information for our parents. Because the more our students can come to school prepared with that thought in mind about proper ways to wear masks and all those things, the better. One of the things that, one of the questions that ask about what have we learned from the tutoring and the, one of those things. One of the things we learned from the reading tutoring is that even though we do the training and even though our adults know, they have to be practiced and get feedback and go over it and over and over it because they're so used to teaching the way they used to. They have to be reinforced over and over. The simple example that's been given is materials handling. Teachers are used to just collecting papers, putting them all in a stack. But when you're sorting through individuals, all 15 students touching the paper, putting them all in one pack, where they're all together, there are rules that we're putting together around the best way, as much as possible, to handle materials in a room. How to disinfect those things as you go through, and so how often those things need to be done. So all those pieces are put in place. And I don't know if Dr. Knutson is online and would like to share anything else?
We can actually publish those for you because there's quite a bit. But the initial trainings were face-to-face, and now we're doing them video so they can be watched over and over again. What we've learned from online learning is the ability to watch over. And just for keeping the consistency, when we had just the six to seven groups in the sports, it was very controlled. And now doing more people, the goal is to actually have that consistency. And what do you call it, non-variation of training? So that everybody feels that they are receiving the very best. But I think there's like 19 different things, so we can, we can give those links and things to those.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is board member Mitchell. Two questions, please.
Thank you. I am happy to hear about using those bigger spaces in the schools. And I am also happy that if we are going back sooner, that we are doing it with a very limited number of students. I'm wondering what, you talked about looking at the spaces and how many students would fit into each. What guideline are you using? Are you using the three-foot or the six-foot?
Six-foot when possible.
Okay, so is that what we're going to strive for in each of our classrooms?
Yes, that's what they're working on now.
Okay. And then the other question that I'm hearing from people all over the community, in particular community councils, is we, you know, we had the matrix that we went through the summer with, and now we have the matrix that we can, was introduced to us, I think, two board meetings ago or three board meetings ago. And looking at today's results for that matrix, we're in, deep into the red zone for our number-one core indicator. It's greater than 200 and we're at 468 today. We're into the moderate risk for the second one at 5.3%. And I think people are just, and then in the secondary indicators, the first one, we're in the orange. I think people are just wondering, you know, the comment that we're balancing the educational and in particular, the mental health needs of our students against the risks, the community risks. And I, you know, what I'm not seeing is what each of these things translates to, like we had in our first chart at the beginning of the summer, where each, the green and the orange and the red specifically related to an outcome. But people are just wondering, okay, so here's where we are on the, on the matrix. What corresponding data is there on the other side? And how does that balance against what the matrix is showing?
Sure, that's a great question, and that's one that many people have. And the answer is, is that the science and the understanding of this virus from absolute lockdown, if we're in the highest category, has changed. It isn't hunker down because we have this many cases anywhere, essentially. It is utilizing the best practices and the evidence. And so the evidence in schools going back in the largest cities, 24 of the 50 largest school districts in the nation have returned to school. They're finding the same thing that they're finding out in New York, that schools, because of these mitigation and structures, are not high, you know, COVID, you know, spreaders. Very similar reasons why hospitals are saying, please come to us with the concerns for diabetes, for heart disease, for this, because we can still service you even in the highest category. And so as we learn and the science improves, that's the kinds of conversations we've had as well with our medical professionals, Dr. Zink and the like and their team about, there aren't any absolutes. We are moving forward, understanding the services and needs in our community and understanding moving forward, how do we move forward? We have to move forward in a very structured, phased, monitored, safe approach. The selection, the smaller groups, the smaller classes, as well as the younger students and not going K-6, not going K-12, is that other side of that matrix to tell you, what does this mean highest? Highest means we can't operate in this, let's just go back and try it out. It is about understanding what can be done with the mitigation and how we move forward. The idea that right now, kids are in our buildings, kids are playing sports, kids are with each other in school, interestingly enough, as well as out. We had testimony tonight that shared, I don't want to go back as a teacher, but my kids are fine because we're in sports, parties, things like that. Those are the juxtapositions of all this pieces of information, understanding what kids' needs are. And if we have to expend any kind of energy in getting kids together, I would hope that priority get them back into school. And so I wish in all of COVID, there was a flip of a switch up and off. But what we've learned and what the doctors have shared with us is it just doesn't occur that way. Sorry, we can't give you those answers. But what we can say is, how do you move forward? And what would make things safer to do so? And what are the questions that you have to respond with the answers and the questions to your staff to have them feel that they can come back? Have people feel they can travel safely? And so it's really living and learning and growing through, living through this pandemic.
So can I just ask a follow-up on that? A short one? So I, thank you for that response. I guess the question then that one might ask is then, what is the significance of the matrix really in the present situation?
That's good. The matrix actually added techniques that really had schools and other areas focus on, as restaurants, we could ask, we're in a red zone. Why do we have restaurants and bars open? We're in a red zone. Why do we get to do this? Those are great questions. The mitigation and those zones really say, these things have to be in place if you were to go back safely. They demonstrate that you better be aware, you're in the highest category. So how are you going to behave and react? And I believe that you have to take that seriously. We, I don't want to say we live in fear, but we have to have an understanding that we have to have a high respect for everything that goes on. When there's concerns about mask wearing or kids, you know, interacting too closely, we have to take those seriously, understanding that our mitigation are key to those features and the ability to do that. It's really part of the picture of really how we're operating through COVID. I think they tell us a lot. I would say, as if we had every single category somewhere, that might alert Dr. Zink and those that advise us, they might advise the governor differently. They may advise everyone differently, the travel agencies, similar to how things were advised before. But with this support, it was to move forward. I don't know how to create a matrix on human lives due to loss of suicides. I don't know how to create a matrix of families despair. I don't know what numbers to put on a matrix of the sadness and suffering that's going on. It's not easy to do. And that might be why as well. There's a balance of what we know in cases with this balance of human beings operating in the world that we know. It's just difficult to do. That's a great question, though.
Next up, I have board member Hildy. Two questions.
Yeah, thank you. So I hear the desire to get six feet apart, use other multipurpose rooms. So to me, that says classes will change. If I have 20 kids in my class, I might have 18, and then those two kids might be with mother, two kids and new class with a new teacher. I guess the new teacher component is what I just want to clarify.
That's a great question. We did add new teachers to make class sizes smaller. What they're working on now is kindergarten classes, especially even if they're 18, it's still, some of the classrooms aren't big enough, what we found. Some schools have classrooms because of the space that they can do that, others can't. Some have a cordon wall open up. So it really depends on that space again, and that's why it goes back to the school level. But we have teachers aides, so it might not be that a whole different teacher. It might be that in this larger space, we have two adults with two small groups of children. So that's one of the solutions, because kindergartens have the part-time aides, but the aides are there for that same time, that extended period for the majority of that time. Because again, kids' days have been narrowed, so we have that. But it could end up where we split a class if needed and find other teachers if we move on. Again, the classes that we're looking at are already designed to be smaller. We do have a few outliers, but the majority are not in the 30s, not in the...
But it could be that one or two in the district have to have...
Correct. Have new teachers possibly, have team teachers teaching a bigger amount. There's lots of different ways that have suggested some of the solutions. And so we're really, again, we're utilizing kind of the, I think, member Bellamy used the imagination and ingenuity, if you will, of trying to think of a new way to do things. And then that has to go to the supervisor to be checked off as something that would fit in that category of safety.
Was it your only question, member Hildy? Okay, member Marseth, up to two.
So my question is, why do our teachers think an assumption becomes reality? But why do they think they don't have the materials they need?
Well, we don't have kids back in school yet. And the idea that we're just sharing, we just need to create a calmness that the leaders are the principals in the building. And there are, we heard something about, I only have a hand sanitizer. Well, you have a hand sanitizer because there's one person in a classroom, and that's what we use. We have thousands of hand sanitizers for every classroom where the kids can use them. We have thousands of dividers that are coming in at the end of October. The materials aren't moved to the classroom because the students are not back in the classroom, and they are being, you know, sorted and assigned and signed up. We are utilizing every piece of resource that we can. Principals know, there's a plan, we have this, we're doing this in a very ordered fashion. These are highly sought-after resources, if you will. We would hate to have everything dispersed to classrooms and put and then have all that disappear for whatever reason when it's needed. And so when people weren't in the buildings, we didn't want to just drop things off and have them just sit there without being observed. Because really, in the greater city even, we just need to have an account of the items, where they're going, how to request a refill, things like that. So the actual items are just in logistics of getting them out. So they're here, you know, they're present. We would ask that teachers talk to the principal. I'm in principals' meetings, and they'll share, hey, we're out of boxes of gloves. I don't know where they are. And sometimes they're in a different room that they lock them up in so that they wouldn't just be left on the counter. So with, you know, nearly 100 schools and programs, they're all different manners of being put away. I think the bigger issue is, I want answers now because I have this fear of, you say to do these things, but I'm afraid, and I'm sure you're getting the job done, district. And the idea, again, to, for me to just write in paper, and I have, we have the plans, they're being made, they're this, that's just, it's not good enough. Because what you need to do is you need to participate in it. I need to put my hands on them. I need to do everything. And we have that November 2nd date to say, all of those training things need to be, like to have your plan approved so that it can be dispersed. There are a lot, a lot of teachers in a building do know about it, the ones that are participating in those leadership groups because they're, you know, making the plans. But certainly 3,200 teachers have heard, yes, it's there. But a lot of times, it's like, the proof is on the pudding. I want to see it in front of me. And that is happening as we plan. Again, we had staged for K-6 at one time. The phased-in approach, we narrowed it back. And so in a large, things just aren't there immediately. Yeah, there's lots of logistical truck deliveries, this and that, not only truck deliveries to a school, but then delivery to a classroom. And they will be delivered as, how many students are in this classroom, times by two masks a day, times by this? What materials do we have to have at Inlet View as opposed to another school? And again, we're utilizing data from schools that are in session for things like masks. We have hundreds of thousands of masks. But we also need to have hundreds of thousands of masks last us for two months. Just depositing somewhere doesn't always work in our district. And so I don't know if Tom wants to share more on that, but that specifically, and I wish I could just snap a finger and have it there. I'm communicating to earn the trust, but without people seeing it and believing it, getting information from a primary source, other than, we had an incident last week where a principal talked to staff, staff posted inaccurate information on social media. Social media, I get a call from a board member. You know, I mean, that's how fast we're operating a system. And we, my goal is to have teachers feel, okay, I see it, I can believe it, and we're going to get there, and we're going to get there building by building because they trust their principal. They trust the teacher next to them. That's what we need to have happen. But I totally agree. I want to see it to believe it. So Roth, can you, Mr. Roth, share?
Dr. Bishop, I think you covered it great. I would submit to the board that the materials are there in the schools, and there's more coming. So, you know, just to share an anecdote, you know, we, as an example, we receive thousands of cloth masks. And I gave guidance to the purchasing warehouse to deliver a box of 500 to every school because we have, we have that number. So I was contacted by a principal, where is our stuff? We didn't get it. So tracked it down. It turned out, you know, the box was there, it was just under the AA's desk. A lot of the materials have been distributed in the classroom. Some, like the superintendent mentioned, are just being, they're being stored by the BPOs as we get closer to the date when students are back in the building, that the hydrochloric acid will be, will be added to the spray bottles. And they'll be positioned in the classroom for... the spray bottles, and they'll be positioned in the classroom for teacher use. The stuff that's coming, you know, these barriers that we've heard a lot about, you know, this, we had no idea going into it this summer, what the demand was going to be, we just didn't. And the initial items that we got were really intended for our sessions in elementary schools. And we quickly discovered that, you know, there was a demand, so we ordered another thousand, Dr. Bishop had mentioned those, those would be in this month, and those are all going down to elementary schools. We've got 5,000 more on order, we'll have those in two weeks. We've got 10,000, which are larger in size for middle school and for high school students. Those are coming in. Again, you know, it's trying to figure out what the demand is and what the need is, and then responding to it. The hand sanitizer, we're going to have hand sanitizer dispensers, the wall-mounted dispensers, in every classroom. That's our goal, and we should be able to attain that, if not by 16 November, pretty darn close. That's our goal. We're going to have these powered air dispensers, or the spray dispensers, in every classroom. But again, you know, like the superintendent mentioned, there's a bit of a supply and demand issue, but I think, again, we're going to have these in place in time for the start of school, especially, we're going to prioritize to our elementary schools. So it's happening, it's coming, and I recognize the frustration, you know, that people are hearing about it but not seeing it. But I would tell you, it's there, and it's coming in quantity.
So just quickly to follow up, I believe the supplies are coming. I have no doubt that we either have them, or they're coming, or whatever. My question is, with everything, if our teachers don't feel that, how can we communicate to them? I know seeing is believing, but it just seemed, and I know we're talking to principals, principals talking to their teachers, but maybe, and I know communication is hard, but I think a lot of this, and assumption becomes reality, and then they become fearful, because they feel like they don't know everything, or they don't see it, or whatever. District, how can we do a better job, knowing that these things are coming, knowing that they're going to be there? How can we look at this differently to reassure them?
Member Marseth, that's a great, I would take any suggestion, because my communication with principals to reassure them, this last time was really, I spoke with principals about, how should we communicate with staff? Would you like a letter from me? Would you like it at the district? I will share. And the principal said, I would like to talk to my staff first. I want, and that's really where that relationship lies, because they know them. And it's no secret, probably from the beginning of the time, it's always good to point to the entity that you don't really know, you don't know personally. It's more difficult. And so we're just going to continue to communicate with principals, really ensure that they know where things are so that they can immediately answer questions. You know, 150 emails in an email box of one person, or 3,200 if every teacher were to ask me, I couldn't possibly respond to those. They are out in communications about, these groups are going now. The latest, you know, issue was, teachers are not on those things, AEA is not. And then we had to demonstrate to AEA leadership, oh yes, here are the names of your AEA members that are on these things. So somehow, we have to ourselves be responsible in knowing that we work for an organization, a board that has publicly shared things, districts that have publicly shared things, that we are working as quickly and as fast as we can with the changing information and understanding. Every time that, I mean, I think we have about four or five different masks that teachers can pick from, of the shields with masks, vanity shields, because some said, well, I don't want my face to be covered, so we purchased these kind. Like, we're literally trying to meet, some go up like this, and some go down like this. They're all approved by the CDC, we ensure that Jen does that, but we're doing that to make our teachers more comfortable. I don't think, I want a whole face covering, but I want my mouth to be shown. I want a mask and a face covering. I want the face covering down here. I want my students to have this type of face covering, because if there's any kind of saliva, you know, that just comes out. So, you know, all of those are issues. I want to say, I want to answer them just like that, but it's just, we are a majorly large organization with 6,000 employees, and the best place to go for information is the original source to our employees. And if they're unsure, everyone has a supervisor, just go to your supervisor and say, wait a minute, I'm hearing this, but I don't really see it, could you share that with us? And then if principals say, you know what, I don't know either, I encourage them to reach out directly, I will drop everything to ensure that our people have the information they need to do this. That's why I'm so confident, I live and breathe it all the time. Our people are smart, teachers are doing a fantastic job, those that have come back person-to-person, those that are doing online, I just, I have the confidence in this, and I believe it's the right thing. We are out and about in our community, we have that shared by our own educators. If we don't prioritize schooling, I don't know what we're about. So I just want to share that. I know they can do it. ASD employees are good.
I just want to say that you're absolutely right. I am, I'm going to say this, and I am disappointed in some of our teachers that are going to social media to bring these type of issues up instead of going directly to their supervisor or principal, because they're fueling the fire. And I, you know, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to say what I think, I'm going to say what I think part of the problem is. And so I would encourage teachers, if you have questions, don't go to social media, ask the people that have the answers.
All right, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask my own real quick question. The mitigation plans and procedures for each school that is currently being worked out, that was referenced in the superintendent's report, will those plans be out on the website with all of the other information for families and stuff like that?
Good question, and actually, Member Marseth also had a communication during the prior meeting about that. Dr. Stock?
Yes. We're going to template that's supposed to be out there, and then we would expect each principal to provide that kind of data for their specific school, because it would be unique to each school site, we would expect the principals to make that information available for their parents in that school.
And just to follow up on that, as they're turned in, we can publish them on the school site ourselves. So not only are they in a commonplace for principals to look at each other's, but they can be tied to the school as well for easy access.
Thank you. All right, Andy, Member Holloman, two more questions?
One is, you know, this is a change from where we thought we were going a month ago. The return for the rest of elementary and for the, for middle and for high school, is that still under the matrix? Or those still are thresholds for that? Or do we not have plans for them to return at this moment while the case counts and are in the red zone?
Thank you. At this point in time, we're focusing on the phased approach with elementary, and I'm going to hold off on any comments in regard to other grade levels, without having the exact data and understanding about the first phase.
Sure, I can understand that. The other question I had, you mentioned that with Canvas, we could transition between being in school and, or being face-to-face and remote. If students are having to quarantine, they're staying with their teacher and transitioning to Canvas and staying with their in-school class? Let's say if a child has to quarantine for 10 days, do they continue with their face-to-face teacher and their face-to-face curriculum during that time, and then come back?
Thank you, Member Holloman, through the president. So, yes, we are working on what I would call short and intermediate-level absence procedures. We are aware that around the country, when we do this with the mitigation procedures in place, that we will have places, just like we've had occasionally with our sports programs, we will have events where we will have to quarantine a classroom and so on, or we will have certain families in a school where there might be five or six students who are then quarantined at home. And there will be these stretches of absences that are going to occur, even within a family or within a unit, through contact notification, where we will have to have students gone for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks at a time, depending on what's going on in that student's family. So we are building right now, the Teaching and Learning Department is working with elementary, and they are building robust, trying to enhance the Canvas offerings, so that there are assignments and lessons and videos and things in place that we would be able to have, where those students could make up that work and stay in touch, in connection with the class while they're out. So, yet those procedures are being worked on, and we are anticipating that we will have higher absences than normal due to that. So we will call that the short. Of course, our hope is that if a family's just choosing not to return for the year, we're encouraging them to switch to the ASD virtual program, which is going to be enhanced itself. They're working on adding additional Zoom classes and live teaching to those. As you are aware, the ASD virtual was primarily built around a homeschool model, which meant the parents do most of that homeschooling. So in addition to providing the short-term pieces where they're anticipating returning to that classroom, we're also modifying the ASD virtual homeschooling program so that it's more like what we're doing now as far as live teaching. So that, those announcements will be forthcoming, and we'll be putting out some talking points to the principals, so they can help explain that to parents when the survey comes out. So I hope I answered your question. So we do have a short-term plan, and then we're tweaking our long-term plan for ASD virtual.
Thank you. All right, I know that I've got board members with hands up. I also know that this is also going to come up again in the School Start Task Force. I know that I have got another 12 people in public testimony with 14 additional people on our action item testimony. So I do think I want to go ahead and wrap up the conversation right now, write down your questions, because we will come back under non-action and have the conversation. We wanted to schedule a quick comfort break for everybody, so that we can come back and do the next stretch all the way through. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and give five minutes to everybody, and please return at 8:50 or 8:51, so that we can get right going again, and we will move on into our consent agenda and our action testimony.
This one's still working.
All right, it's 8:51, 60-second warning. All right, it is 8:52. We are going to go ahead and bring this meeting back into active session right now. Would like to ask really quickly, our two members, Member Holloman and Member Donley, please log into Board Docs. Yes, thank you. Please log into Board Docs, that is how we will vote, instead of a roll call vote. Yeah, since we've got majority here, we'll go ahead and do that, and hopefully that will work. Our next item up on the agenda is the consent agenda. And Member Bellamy, if you would.
I move to approve the consent agenda, consisting of ASD memorandum number 033, the Personnel Report, and September Minutes, Executive and Work Session Minutes for September 8, 2020.
Do I have a second? Second? Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. I've got a first and a second. If board members will please vote.
I vote yes. I haven't need to turn my computer back on, so.
Oh, hold on, it'll be on my Zoom though. Okay, and the consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda.
Student hearing.
Oh, student hearing.
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I like the consent agenda so much, I wanted to do it twice.
I move to approve the expulsion of the student associated with ASD incident number 1321452 as discussed in executive session.
Would board members please vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Dave. And student hearings passes with seven yays and zero nay. I'm going to read a brief statement on public testimony for action items because we do have speakers on ASD memorandum 040. The procedures for agenda item testimony are as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president and if seconded by another board member, I will open up the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance for telephonic testimony and received directions on how to connect, you will be called on to testify in the order that you signed up. You will have three minutes to testify. With 30 seconds remain, a chime will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen and if it's not, I will also be announcing it verbally. Item number three is the written public testimony on action items. Just to let folks know, I believe there are eight written public testimonies attached for these items. And moving on to ASD memorandum 041, if you would, please, Member Bellamy.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 041 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Indian Affairs, in the amount of $169,000.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion on ASD memorandum 041? Seeing none, if members could please proceed to vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. ASD memorandum number 041 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next.
I move to approve ASD memorandum numbers. So I have a point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
If we were going to discuss this, do we pull it now or after testimony?
Well, because it's action, we introduce it and get a second and then we do the public testimony and then we discuss it as the board, unless it's.
So do we pull it now?
Well, it's not being pulled. We're.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 040 and approve the request to rename Fairview Elementary School and the auditorium of East Anchorage High School into the Betty Davis Elementary School and Betty Davis Auditorium of East Anchorage High School, respectively.
Thank you. We do have 14 speakers for public testimony, so we will get going. Get back to my speaker screen. The first speaker is Reagan Brooks. Reagan, are you with us tonight?
Hello, my name is Reagan Brooks and I'm the parent of two children in ASD. Thank you all for your hard work. I know you're doing everything you can to make good decisions. Today, I asked you to support the renaming of East to Betty Davis East High School. To begin, I'd like to address some concerns related to the naming report you've received. Yes, the ASD naming committee was trying their best in challenging times, but the survey they sent out was flawed and did not ask people about the name the community has been asking for, Betty Davis East High. Your commitment to using data to inform decisions is admirable, but not all data are quality data. It's simply not okay to discount the name Betty Davis East High as unwanted when it was not actually considered as an option, even if that omission was an innocent mistake. According to the Alaska State Standards, scientific inquiry is characterized by a common set of values that include logical thinking, precision, open-mindedness, objectivity, skepticism, replicability of result and honor reporting findings. The inquiry process used by the ASD naming committee simply does not meet those standards. Thankfully, you do know that 640 community members have signed a petition supporting the name Betty Davis East High. You also know that both Airport Heights and Fairview Community Councils have urged you not to improve the superintendent's recommendation and you know that hundreds and hundreds of community members have written testimony and comments explaining the compelling educational reasons that they support the name Betty Davis East High. Now on to why this name is such an important opportunity. During your last meeting, you received an update on ASD's important work supporting equal opportunity in schools. That presentation mentioned barriers that can prevent underrepresented students from participating in AP courses, barriers including unwelcomingness or a sense of non-belonging. This name choice is relevant to that conversation. According to equal opportunity schools and other educational experts, school name choices are among the factors that can either support or undermine welcoming and belonging. Senator Betty Davis was the first Black woman to serve in the Alaska Legislature. She was an inspiring leader who championed education and civil rights, and she had a strong connection to the communities she served in East Anchorage. Choosing to honor East with her name is an opportunity to enhance the welcome factor for all students and especially students of color at East High and even at other schools in the district, students who are watching this naming story unfold. We all hope for a more inclusive, more welcoming society, but it's not often that we have the opportunity to make decisions that can advance it so effectively. Each of you can't go to East and have a conversation with individual students and let them know that they are welcome, but you can support a name change that advances welcome and belonging. Please support Betty Davis East High.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is speaker number two, Celeste Hodge-Growden. Celeste, are you with us this evening?
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You've got three minutes and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ainsley School Board Member with Superintendent Bishop. My name is Celeste Hodge-Growden, President and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. I know this is a particularly challenging time for you as you work to do what is best for the children in our district. And as I've shared numerous times already, with COVID-19 cases surging in Alaska, the Alaska Black Caucus stands behind our previous testimony. Please keep our schools closed until COVID transmission rates in our community are lower. There's nothing I have heard that reassures me that kids and teachers can safely return to in-person school. What I've learned is that traditional schooling with in-person classes.
Point of order, Celeste. The action item is speaking on the Betty Davis naming action item. And so public testimony needs to be kept to that one topic, please.
Okay, all right. I am also testifying in support of the renaming of East High School to the Betty Davis East High School. This process has been a disappointment, to say the least. I'm not sure why we were dealt the hand we got, but we have worked quickly to correct misinformation and to disseminate the truth. First, please note, we are not attempting to remove East High Anchorage from the name of the school. This is a misconception. Unfortunately, the survey you have mentioned did not include the naming option we are advocating for, so the data that you have collected does not apply to the request at hand. Additionally, please note that Ivan Moore, founder of Alaska Survey Research, and described your survey as having no control whatsoever. Again, remember that we simply would like Betty Davis added to the existing name so that it reads Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. You cannot dismiss that as something that was rejected if it simply was not offered as an option. I also would like to address any concerns you might have about the amount of money it would cost to make this name change. Please know that we're not asking to make changes overnight, but to make change gradually. Additionally, the Alaska Black Caucus stands ready to help with fundraising efforts. We know community members who understand what is at stake, who knew Betty Davis through her accomplishments, her love for education, her work as a champion of children. We have been hearing from the more than 630 community members who have signed our petition in support of the name Betty Davis East High, those who witnessed her greatness and benefited from her voice, those who value the rich diversity this remarkable school embodies and know this name is the perfect match, those who will see this change as enhancing the rich traditions of Anchorage's second oldest high school. We know change is hard, but we also know this change is right. It's time to move Anchorage forward and I can't think of a better time than now in our country's history, in Alaska's history and in Anchorage's history. Yeah.
Time is up. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, number three, Richard Emanuel. Richard, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for joining us today. Go ahead, three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, School Board Members and Superintendent Bishop. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Richard Emanuel. I am a member of the Alaska Black Caucus Allies for Change, speaking tonight in support of renaming East Anchorage High School Betty Davis East Anchorage High. This is not the recommendation of Dr. Bishop nor of the school district's naming panel, but it is the priority recommendation of the municipal panel rolling roughly a year ago. The coronavirus pandemic complicated the school district's work, especially when it came to community outreach and engagement, but that is not what I want to talk about. I want to try to answer just one question, why East High? Why is East High the best choice to honor the legacy of Betty Davis? To share my view of the decision you face, I need to talk about something else first. UAA Sociologist Dr. Chad Farrell has studied ethnic and racial diversity in Anchorage and Anchorage schools, placing the results in context with the rest of the United States. Farrell's studies made headlines a few years ago when he found that an Anchorage neighborhood, Mountain View, is the most diverse census tract in the entire United States. Reading this in the newspaper, an East High parent contacted Farrell and asked, does this mean our schools are diverse too? Farrell and his colleagues soon determined that the most diverse high school in America is East Anchorage High, scoring 95.9 out of a score of 100. I hope that all of you on the school board and the great majority in the audience tonight feel as I do that this is something special, something to be proud of. Certainly Betty Davis thought so. Betty was always a champion of community, an agent of inclusion, an advocate for equity, a defender of diversity. So I think adding Betty's name to this singular school, not co-opting but adopting the name of this most diverse high school in America, I can't think of a better tribute to Betty Davis's legacy of service. It is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this, but there is a larger sense in which it is right. Adding Betty's name to East highlights the school's remarkable status. It draws attention to one of East's fundamental qualities. It celebrates diversity and this is a good thing. To close, let me quote from a chapter Dr. Farrell wrote for the book Imagining Anchorage. Quote, "Despite its diversity, Anchorage is no post-racial utopia. Eight crimes have occurred here in recent memory, yet there is a parallel to the narrative. A long line of academic research indicates that exposure to diversity via contact with members of groups other than our own engenders tolerance and undermines prejudice that might even make us smarter," end quote. And so there is documented educational value here. This is not just a feel-good idea. Dr. Farrell says that Anchorage finds itself at the vanguard of an emerging national diversity trend. Quote, "This presents us with tremendous opportunities," he says, "and some significant challenges as well." Some of the challenges we face are evident tonight. Fine, as you weigh your decision, let's embrace the challenge and the opportunity. Let's celebrate our rich diversity by adding Betty Davis's name to East Anchorage High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is speaker number four, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you with us tonight?
Hello?
Yes, thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Yeah, before I get started and before you start my timer, I would like the opportunity to testify on opening classrooms during the public testimony later on tonight, as I was definitely not aware of testimony restrictions, as neither was Celeste Hodge. You know, so if we could be given an opportunity to speak on that at some point during public testimony a little later on as the continued portion, I sure would appreciate that. Then I'm sure Celeste Hodge would appreciate that as well.
Okay, sir, I'll go ahead and give you the three minutes on the action item and then I can add the name to the end as long as it's the two different topics.
Outstanding. Thank you. All right. Thank you to the board.
Three minutes, please continue.
All right. Thank you to the board. I would like to, my name is Danielle Kemp, retired Army Combat Officer and teacher here at ASD, and I would like to speak on Betty Davis and why East High should include her name. There was, there was no stronger or hard-working advocate for our children, women, and racial equity than Betty Davis. Y'all know that. We all know that, all right? And as a district, you know, we brag openly about having the most diverse student population in the nation while simultaneously having one of the least diverse teacher populations and faculty names in the state and in the nation. All right? This is really not putting our money where our mouth is and it needs to change. The name Betty Davis is value-added to East High and to the Anchorage School District in a way. Let me say that again. The name Betty Davis, Betty Jean Davis, is value-added to East High, not taken away. And by approving the name Betty Davis East High School, the Anchorage School District will take a step in the right direction towards creating a more diverse and equitable district. Thank you for your time and I hope and pray that you consider all testimonies on behalf of Betty Davis East High School.
Thank you very much. Next up in the queue, Thea Agnew Bemben. Thea, are you with us tonight?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you very much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity, members of the school board. My name's Thea Agnew Bemben. I grew up here in Anchorage. I went to Anchorage School District Schools and I currently have two kids in our, in our district going to school. I would like to urge you to support the renaming of East High to Betty Davis East High. And I see in the resolution that's in your agenda tonight that the recommendation is that the auditorium at East and Fairview Elementary be named after Senator Davis. I think that disregards the interest of the Fairview community that is interested in naming Fairview Elementary after Dr. Ethel Davis, who was our first African-American principal in the district. I think we have an opportunity right now to name an elementary school and one of our large high schools after two very important community leaders. They're women. They're both women of color. They both were people who led the way for others. Senator Davis also committed time and energy and effort to really improving East High School. It's also a very prominent building. I think it's dishonest to take information that was collected through essentially a Facebook poll as some kind of scientific data to sway you towards not doing this. I would like you to take note of the letters to the editor that have been in the paper, the over 600 people who've signed up. that have been in the paper, the over 600 people who've signed a petition, and also the recommendation of the municipal naming committee that did include community members who identified this renaming of Betty Davis East High School to honor Senator Davis. So I would urge you not to support the recommendation that's in front of you tonight, and instead to allow Fairview to name their school after a pioneering woman of color, and for you to do the same for East High and rename it Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Tom Begich. Tom, are you with us tonight?
I am.
Thank you so much. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Tom Begich. I'm the State Senator for Anchorage District J, and I really do thank you for the opportunity to testify. I want to take a moment to acknowledge your hard work and your commitment to honoring our history and our past in your recognition of our former Anchorage School Board Member and Alaska legislator and my friend, the late Betty Davis. We honor our past leaders through the naming process, and few could be as deserving as Betty. As you've heard, others have spoken about and will speak about her accomplishments. It's a long list of community accomplishments. Often, the leadership of those who've done so much for our community is not acknowledged, but your commitment to honor Senator Davis is truly appreciated. More particularly, though, I'm here to echo many of the comments you've heard earlier. I'm here to ask for you to give consideration to amending your present proposed resolution regarding the naming of facilities for Senator Davis. As others have said, I'm asking for your support for the additional naming of East Anchorage High as Betty Davis East Anchorage High, similar to how we have honored the late Senator Ted Stevens in adding his name to our historic Anchorage airport. I note you have suggested naming Fairview Elementary after Senator Davis, but must pass on to you, as Thea just has, the hard work of the Fairview community and the school to seek a name for that school while honoring our African-American principal in the ASD, Dr. Thel Davis, a past principal of Fairview and a remarkable educator in her own right. I rarely testify before the school board, and these comments will be very, very brief. I generally do trust your guidance. But in this matter, and in these difficult times, I'm speaking to you as a lifelong Alaskan and a graduate of Alaska Schools and Anchorage Schools. I feel compelled to offer you these thoughts. There's a heightened community anxiety in the shadow of the pandemic. We heard that earlier today. And often, we find ourselves unnecessarily pitted against each other because of it. In the area of naming our schools, we should not be pitted against each other. Naming our schools should not be an area where our dialogue is not in harmony. It should be a time when we come together. Betty Davis East Anchorage High School is a name that will bring us together. Honoring our past and the present, I ask you to consider this amendment to the resolution. Thank you again for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Senator Begich. Next up, speaker number seven, Georgiana Lincoln. Georgiana, are you with us tonight? I think she probably accidentally hung up when she was trying to unmute, so I will come back to her. Next up, speaker number eight, Dan Loring. Dan, are you with us this evening?
Hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Madam President, members of the school board, Superintendent Bishop, my name is Dan Loring, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to testify tonight. First, I'd like to thank you and teachers, students, families for working as hard as you can in a very, very fine time for all of us. Tonight, I would like to provide my thoughts on changing the name Fairview Elementary School to Betty Davis Elementary. As a current Fairview resident, past Fairview Community Council Board Member and President, as well as a past Board Member and President of the Fairview Elementary PTA, and a current resident of Fairview, I have quite a few thoughts on this. First, my thoughts on the process. The process, I think, is deeply flawed. There's not many in Fairview know that there's a proposal tonight to rename Fairview Elementary School Betty Davis Elementary School. And I think that's unfortunate for the resources of ASD and the various committees. And so, I would hope that you would take into consideration of my testimony and other people's testimony about the process not being inclusive or thorough enough. Apparently, the community council has been discussing changing the name and making it a magnet school. I'd like to know, you know, what do the parents think? What do the children think? Renaming it and making it a magnet school takes a lot of thought and a lot of planning. Second, I ask, why Betty Davis? Certainly, well-qualified and a great human being and resident of Anchorage and Alaska. How about Rosa Foster? She was one of the best principals at Fairview Elementary School. She was a hard principal. She was a hard teacher. She was loved by all, especially by her students. How about Vince Casey? Vince Casey is, is that my three minutes? Oh, I got 30 seconds. Vince Casey would be another great, great person. Or the first African-American principal in ASD. You know, I guess originally I was opposed to renaming the school, you know, but if it's done for the right reason, I would support it. And the right reason is not a symbolic reason. Right? Reason would be to drastically the academic outcomes for the students at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. I saw that Speaker number seven, Georgiana Lincoln, has rejoined us. Georgiana, are you with us tonight? It is star six to unmute.
Now.
Yes, ma'am. Now we can hear you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I hung up for myself. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak in favor of changing the name of East High School to the Betty Davis East High School. Betty and I served in the Alaska Legislature, beginning together in 1990 in the House of Representatives, and then we both moved on to the Senate. She is the first African-American ever elected to the Alaska State Senate, and I as the first Alaska Native woman. I remember a respected Native elder telling me we shouldn't name a structure after someone who was living because they hadn't lived out their lives yet. Well, my friend, my sister-in-law had lived out her life. That was impeccable. She loved children of all ages, and it showed. If any legislator had questions about education, ask Betty Davis. Whether it was how resources was divided up or overcrowding in schools, curriculum, go to Betty for the answer. She was miss education. She fought for all Alaska's children to receive the best of education. She didn't just fight for one community. She was fighting for all of Alaska. And education was always the top priority for her. The gentleman before me asked why, what reason do we have to name it Betty Davis? She deserves to have a school named after her. Family, friends, community members, and community organizations have appropriately suggested East High School as their selection. And why not? East High School was in her district, which many minorities attended. It's a rainbow of color. As you heard from many who testified tonight, diversity was East High School, which only seems fitting for Betty believed every student. Every student should have the best of education, regardless of color. I admit, I don't know how policy dictates a naming or renaming of a school. It seems to me East High School is available for bestowing an honorable name. I read where, when asked if a school should be renamed, the answer was 84.2% no, and yes, 15.8%. But those that were asked the question and responded was parents, 7.2%, communities, 8%. Yeah.
I'm sorry, dear. The time is up.
Oh, and the remainder comprised of students. But I'm proud to be on the list of folks asking for consideration. Thank you.
Next speaker number nine, Janice Fleishman. Janice, are you with us tonight?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Janice Fleishman. I taught high school in the Anchorage School District for 18 years and was a principal for five years. My last four years was as an assistant principal at East High School and principal of East High Schools in the school. East High School is a wonderful school. The word "east" is merely a direction on a compass. It means nothing. There are dozens of East Highs in the U.S., Salt Lake City, Harlem, Louisville, Memphis, Wichita, just to name a few. A school named Betty Davis East High is a name that means so much more. It is human nature to resist change. As Alaskans, with help from the federal government, we were able to change the name of the highest mountain in North America from McKinley to a name indigenous people for thousands of years, Denali. It is a beautiful Athabaskan word. We did not run a Facebook survey of people that had climbed the mountain to ask how they felt. The mountain called Denali, it wasn't for the current users, but rather for the generations to come. Those of us old enough to remember had a few awkward years of remembering to call it Denali. But now, it's called Denali, the Great One, and it's an honor to indigenous people, and it's used throughout the world. In the same way, we are not changing the name of the school for those that graduated from there, and also not for Betty Davis, because sadly, she died a few years ago. We are naming this high school Betty Davis East High School for the children and their families that will someday attend. They will learn that Betty Davis spent her life making Anchorage a better place as a representative to the Alaska State Legislature, as the first Black woman to be an Alaska State Senator, and as a member of this school board for 11 years, 11 years of coming to these meetings, and two years on the State Board of Higher Education. Whether it is a student learning this in their classroom or a curious driver passing by the beautiful school and seeing Betty Davis and looking it up and finding out about her, we will be honoring a woman who gave so much to this community. Structural racism is a concept that's being talked about all over our country now. It takes effort to recognize and change. Sports teams are giving up mascots that have been offensive to indigenous people. Communities are taking down statues of slave owners. Army bases are being renamed. State flags are being redesigned to eliminate the Confederate flag. These are all painful and difficult processes. But this is how we start to make amends to our past. This is how we begin to change, by doing what is right, which is not always popular. If this board decides not to rename East High, be clear and be honest. You are engaging in structural racism. You believe that giving voice to "it's always been East High" is more important than showing our community that we are willing to change, that we are willing to be more inclusive, and that we are proud of the contributions of Betty Davis, a Black woman.
Your time is up.
Please add Betty to the name of East High. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is speaker number 10, Kier Moore. Kier, are you with us tonight?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Kier Moore. I'm an ASD parent and community member. Thank for hearing my testimony. This time is so tough for everyone, and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing to keep our students and teachers safe through the pandemic. I support the renaming of East High to honor Senator Betty Davis. I'm a parent of an eighth grader who will be attending East High next year, and I would love for him to go to Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. I'm here to ask the school board to listen, listen, to our diverse community about this. The informal poll that led to a recommendation to not name East after Senator Davis wasn't circulated to many in the East community. It only went to some alumni, some teachers, and some in the local community. It was circulated on Facebook, and it's unknown who responded to it or why it reached those individuals and not others. This doesn't seem very fair or equitable to me. If the school board takes their time and follows a fair process for determining which school to rename to Senator Davis, you'll take into account community input in a fair way. You might choose to hold another legitimate survey, and you'll listen to the community that holds Senator Davis's accomplishments dear to our hearts. You'll take the more challenging path, but won't it be worth it? It's so easy to say no, but that's not the right way to go this time. As I see it, ASD can have an easy win with this one. Wouldn't that be great amid all that's going on these days? Let's do something to confer an honor of appropriate magnitude on Alaska's first Black state senator. This would show Anchorage's diverse student body that we as a community celebrate diversity, equity, and the accomplishments of Black people. Let's add Betty Davis's name not to an elementary school and a room as if it's consolation prize, but to East Anchorage High School. Please consider voting against the recommendation and instead considering this: Betty Davis Anchorage East High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 11, Alex Blum. Alex, are you with us tonight?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Bishop and school board members. I appreciate all the work you're doing to support and improve the education of Anchorage students. My name is Alex Blum, and I'm here to express my support for renaming East High to Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. I ask you to support this change as well, instead of renaming Fairview Elementary. I support the renaming of East High because it's important that students at Anchorage's most diverse high school have the opportunity to learn from Betty Davis's example and to understand how someone who lived right by their school had such a tremendous impact on the community. That's important for Black students who will feel a deeper sense of belonging at a high school named for someone who looks like they do. It's also important for white students who have a constant and powerful reminder that despite what much of our culture implies and what many of our institutions' names would suggest, Black people have provided invaluable leadership in our communities and advocated many of the changes that we all benefit from. In supporting the renaming of East High to Betty Davis East High School, you would also be following the recommendation of the Municipality of Anchorage's panel. Thank you for considering your testimony and for all that you do for Anchorage schools and students.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 12, Ivan Moore. Ivan, are you with us tonight? Yeah, he's on. Ivan, it's star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi there. We hear you. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Bishop, members of the school board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come along and testify tonight. I want to give a shout-out, first of all, to the teachers I heard testify earlier as a parent of two former ASD students. As a parent of two former ASD students, I was aware back then of what a wonderful job they do, and it was really heart wrenching to hear some of the testimony from them about their current experience. And so I want to say loud and clear that you are welcome to ignore my testimony tonight. Please hear theirs. I'm a 30-year public opinion pollster, president of Alaska Survey Research, formerly Ivan Moore Research. I've done this stuff for a long time. There's no doubt that it is appropriate for public officials on occasion to test the sentiments of the public prior to making public policy decisions. Shouldn't be done every time, that's why we elect you, to make decisions. But it is appropriate at times. However, it's always important to make sure that when that is done, it's done in a way that is valid and produces representative results, and is done in a way that doesn't allow the results to be manipulated. From what I've been led to understand, and I want to make clear here, that I don't have a dog in this fight. I really don't have an opinion one way or another on the issue itself, but it distresses me to see public policy decisions be made in the wake of a survey that could be so easily, totally 180 degrees opposite of what it really is. It would be very easy for folks to post a survey like this onto one of the more virulent Facebook sites in town. We all know what the current situation is like in that respect. And so, from your point of view, I think it's important, you've got two cases. You've done the survey. There appear to be very different results for the elementary schools and for the high school. There are way different sample sizes, which looks to me like it has been spread around with certain people. And I think from your point of view, what you've got to do is akin to when a judge instructs a jury to disregard evidence that they've been privy to.
Ivan?
Yes.
We're at our three minutes.
Evidence that is...
I'm sorry, we're done. Your testimony is done. I'm sorry. The next speaker number 13 is Cheryl Crannick. Cheryl, are you with us tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Madam President, Dr. Bishop, and members of the school board, thank you so much for the opportunity to voice my opinion on this matter tonight. I really appreciate it. I would like to say, as an Alaskan who was born in Petersburg and raised in Anchorage, and I grew up in Anchorage School, and as a 1979 graduate of East High School, I was stunned, shocked, and dismayed when I recently heard that our beloved East High School was going to be renamed. It was deeply saddening to me, and it was quite a huge surprise. As a proud East High School graduate, I urge the board to not name East High School. I feel that it would be a great disservice to our current and past students, teachers, staff, and families to throw away our school's rich historical heritage and significance by obliterating its essential identity. In the late 1970s, I was blessed by an amazing wealth of teachers who had a deep and profound effect on my life at East High School. To this day, whenever I drive by East High School, I reminisce about the superb education I received there and how well-prepared I was for college at the University of Chicago. While most of my college peers were graduates of rich private schools, I always felt an intense and deep sense of pride in my high school, East High School from Anchorage, Alaska. And I would proudly share with anybody who wanted to listen how well East High School had prepared me for the rigors of academics at the University of Chicago. I strongly urge you not to rename our school. I feel that it would be a really sad day if that were to happen. I really think you need to consider the perspective of some of your alumni and how we feel about it as well. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Good night.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 14, Tanya Iden. Tanya, are you with us tonight?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, members of the Anchorage School Board and Superintendent Bishop. Like the previous caller, I also am an alumni of East High School, but I have a little bit different perspective tonight. So thanks for the opportunity to testify on memorandum 40. My name is Tanya Iden. I'm a parent of two students in the Anchorage School District, and I was educated in the Anchorage School District at Baxter Elementary School, Wendler Junior High School, and East Anchorage High School, graduating in 1991. I grew up on the East Side, and Betty Davis served as my representative and senator. I appreciate that the school board, that the school district has pursued naming a facility after the late senator and school board member. She is so deserving of the honor. Tonight I testify urging you to amend this memorandum to name East High Betty Davis East High School. Reading the report that supports the recommendation to name Fairview Elementary School and East High's auditorium after Senator Davis, I was surprised by the undue weight and significance given to the survey that was conducted in which a number of East High alumni indicated they do not support the renaming. My understanding is that the survey was circulated among current students, teachers, and parents, and also promoted on Facebook. We all know Facebook is not known as a pillar of objectivity. The survey might be more aptly described as a poll of the assortment of people who saw the link on Facebook, or maybe the Facebook link was forwarded from one oppositional person to all of their oppositional friends. Perhaps it was a poll of the East High community of opposition to the renaming of the school. I could be wrong about this, but we only know that whether the respondent, we only know whether the respondent is a parent, community member, staff, or alumni. Do the people who took the survey mirror East High, well-known as one of the most diverse high schools in the nation? We'll never know because the informal Facebook poll asked no demographic information. I hope you will consider more than just this set of data as you vote on memorandum 40. Also, please consider that the Fairview Community Council has expressed interest in naming Fairview Elementary School after a different community member, Dr. Elphedra Sampson Davis, the first female African-American teacher in the Anchorage School District, and the first African-American principal in the district at Fairview Elementary School. This seems like a great person to honor in Fairview through naming the elementary school after her. And why deflect and say, yes, we'll name a facility after Betty Davis, a smaller elementary school rather than a large regional high school, because the quote-unquote "survey" expressed that renaming is in opposition to, quote, "legacy and family tradition"? Why be so quick to protect entrenched interests in response to a straightforward proposal to honor a woman of color who served the community for decades? East High is a public school. Yes.
We're at the end of the three minutes.
Okay, well, just naming the school Betty Davis East High School does not take away anything. It's additive and celebratory and positive. We all win.
Thank you so much. All right, next up in person, speaker number 15, and the, what I believe is the last person for public testimony on this action item, is Sarah Boyer.
Can you hear me? Okay.
All right. Three minutes and the floor is yours. Thank you.
I was born and raised in Anchorage. My mom's side of the family immigrated to Billund, and my mom's older sister attended Anchorage High School when it was the only high school in Anchorage. My mom attended West High eight years later. My dad and his five brothers and sisters... My family members have told me stories of being raised in Anchorage when there was only one high school. When the city grew, they needed to add a second high school. This is when East High was built and Anchorage High School's name was changed to West High. There were stories of the sports rivalries, sorry, between East High and West High, and I experienced the same things when I went to West. The stories reflected history of Anchorage, coming from a simple, one-high-school city and then growing enough to need a second high school. The previous caller said that East was just nothing but a direction, but as I stated, the history has a name, or the name has a history. You can see how that's simply not true. That's history, that history is a part of Anchorage, part of what makes it unique, and believe it should be protected. I respect the accomplishments Betty Davis had, and believe naming the theater after her would give her recognition as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, that brings us to the end of the public testimony, and I'd like to open it up for board discussion. Oh, before I go into board members, Dr. Bishop did ask to do a brief admin report on this item, so at this time I will hand it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. Did want to share some of the information to questions that the board had raised last meeting, as well as many testifiers. In regard to the policy, we do have a policy to name a school, and one of the interesting caveats here was a renaming. And so a lot of the traditional practices that had been established were different to begin with, not to mention receiving from another elected body three specific schools for which they would like named, and then receiving it in this body. And so, to understand where people were, it was correct, there was no intention to do a scientific survey. In fact, very similar to how the board puts out its budget survey and other surveys, we followed suit in that. You, it is true, you would have been connected to the schools presently to receive that. So, East High, there are present as well as former people connected to the school. That probably is most likely how they received that survey. It was sent to different churches around the community. Many of the people received it through that. Same was similar at Fairview and Airport Heights. So there was no intention to supersede any prior practice. It was simply, the policy is to name a school, the other actions are administrative regulations on how can it be done, with the intent of having input of people who are, and the administrative regulation actually just names different groups that could be a part of it, with this, the pandemic, and just more. So I wanted to be clear that there was any intention in regard to creating a scientific survey. I was following similar board surveys that we do put out there. I've had, since then, there has been information brought up at last meeting, as well as I talked to a daughter of Dr. Davis in the Fairview community. Of course, Dr. Davis is living, and the administrative regulation speaks to parents, people living their entire lives, their lives before that, as well as I received a personal call from a member of Betty Davis's family as well in regard to their wishes, and presented that within there. I just want to make those clear, I do not have a personal tie. Everyone knows I've lived in Anchorage five years since receiving this job. I have named schools, and there are generally 10 of them, as a matter of fact, and not one was easier than the other. I've had the experience of opening 10 schools in my career, and a brand-new school, if there's opposites of opinions, it is very emotional and very touching. And so I understand the significance of that, and the intent was not to shortchange anything, it was actually to provide the board additional information for which to make a decision. And so I wanted to just share that with you, that on any given day, just to name a brand-new school is difficult, let alone renaming a school and taking away a name that a former process put in place to name it. So again, as a new, maybe the newest member of Anchorage from this table, it, I don't have a favor, it was just the process to provide you information to make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Hildy?
Sure, I'll kick it off. I'll just say two quick things. I'm fine with renaming at Fairview, our board policy was... You can't hear, can you hear now? Okay, can you hear me now? I'll just be quick, I'm fine with the proposed recommendation, our policy was followed, it sounds like we have support for some of it. I'm also fine with Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. My concern, and what I've been hearing, is that we're just going to call it East. We're not going to change the names on the year, we're not going to... So if I'm a high school and you tell me now your school's called Betty Davis East, I don't really feel like that's doing anything. So I wasn't the idea, you know, people wanted to actually change the name of the school where it would be really named after her. I see something good growing out of Fairview, being renamed after Betty Davis. I can see actual impact, children, positive impacts on, you know, building leadership capacity. I love that they're thinking about becoming an alternative program or something like that, and really growing that, but that's where I'm at. Otherwise, I don't want to keep working on this if we don't have a clear, you know, idea today. I'd like to table it for like a year, because we really have significant issues that, I won't speak for Betty, but for people who share Betty's values, like I do, we want to focus on children's needs today, and if we're talking about black kids in our city, like there's very pressing needs today happening, not renaming a school building, that's not the biggest priority for me, and I don't believe it would be for, I won't speak for it, but, so that's just where I'm at.
Next up, member Marset.
I just want to make it clear that if I vote no to rename East High School, it does not mean I'm a racist. As a board member, my responsibility is to listen to members, and there have been many emails not in favor of renaming East High School. No matter what my vote is for or against tonight, I have always voted to support our students and what is best for them. Never have I let race or ethnic origin influence my vote on this board.
Next up in the queue, I have member Mitchell.
I would like to offer an amendment, and then I'll speak to it if it has a second, to rename East Anchorage High School the Betty Davis East, I'm sorry, to rename East High School the Betty Davis East High School. A second.
I have a first and a second to amend the memorandum to rename, instead of Fairview, make East High School the Betty School.
Just point out a clarification, East Anchorage High School or East High School? I've heard a couple of different things.
According to the ASD website, the official name of East High School is East High School, not East Anchorage High School.
So next up, I have member, did you want to speak to your motion first?
I would like to speak to my motion. We heard, we've gotten many, many letters, we have heard much testimony, many of us served with Senator Davis, many of us saw Senator Davis in action, hearing Senator Lincoln talk about the ceilings that they crashed through. crashed through as legislators, and the, Senator Davis was one of the fiercest people I know knew. She didn't care what people thought of her, she didn't care how she came across. She was an advocate for child, not just in Anchorage, but in the state of Alaska. And she is a, you know, I wish I had that kind of self-confidence, and I think I have the passion, but she was a really remarkable person. I think that one of the testifiers talked about making, well, first of all, I'd like to say, the committee from the municipal, the municipal committee of recommendation was to name East Anchorage High School after her, and one of the, East High School, I'm sorry, not East Anchorage High School, one of the testifiers talked about, just to pass her by, the impact that can have, aside from the impact in the district and the impact at that school to, to teach, why is this, you know, people at other schools that are named after people talk about the impact that has, and to be able to teach about the legacy that Senator Davis left. But one of the people who wrote to us talked about living in Oak Park, Illinois, across the street from a model called the Percy Julian Middle School, and she had no relationships to that school. She had not grown up in Oak Park, but one day she looked up that person. Turns out, his family was the first black family to move into Oak Park, Illinois. She learned a tremendous amount about the history of Oak Park, which is now a very, very racially mixed town, and very proud of that. And they were fired, their home was firebombed, their home was, six months later, somebody planted dynamite at the house, and she learned about this whole episode in Oak Park history, and how the community rallied around this family to support them as the first black family in Oak Park. That's the kind of impact that this can have. And another one of our testifiers who talked about the legacy of Anchorage High School, which actually was the very first stage in High, in Anchorage. That was where Bob Hope performed, that was where presidents spoke, that was the only stage in Anchorage for many, many years. That actually got renamed West Anchorage High, was built. And so, we know that, you know, that West Side pride exists now, and so, we have that history of Anchorage High School being renamed West High School, and, and we survived that. So, I strongly, strongly recommend, for all of the reasons outlined, that there is, it's so appropriate to name East after the late Senator Davis, the diversity, having it be one of our major theater high schools. It just, I, I, I'm very, very proud to be able to make this motion.
Next up, I have Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. So, I've been in this district for a long time. I've seen lots of wonderful things happen. Just over, maybe a year ago, Bartlett named its cafeteria after one of its teachers, Tanya Taylor Winchester, because her thing was her kids and making sure they were fed. She had a mini cafeteria in her classroom, along with lots of hot sauce. That community rallied. There was, I, I don't recall that there was anyone who was against it, and that was a good thing. I also remember when Willett Bowman Elementary was named for Willett Bowman. He was one of the first people I met in this town, right before I met Betty. Quality, quality people. And their legacies, they have legacies. A legacy is something that you pass on. You pass it on to your work, your family, your reputation. That's what we're, I'm for passing on the legacy of Senator Betty Davis to the children who will come behind, my son graduated from, from East High School. He doesn't want to rename it either, but he gets it. What he gets is that he has a son, and what he gets is that that son will attend school in this city. And if it just so happens to be East High School, that's going to be a double tradition for him. It will be, yes, Daddy went there, and yes, my son went there. We are creating futures here. We're not creating, you know, we, we can't get tied up as a board in name, in, in, in what people think about race. It's not, Betty was a black woman, a proud, fierce, black woman. We all loved her, we all knew her. There's no denying that she's not enough to be named, for this school to be named after. But what we have to do is focus on the good that we do for kids. So, yes, the simple name, just like words matter and how we use them, the names we put on our buildings matter. If we can name someplace Bootleggers Cove, we certainly can name a school after Senator Betty Davis. And it gets to be personal. I, I, I'm not going to pretend that I'm not passionate about this, and I absolutely understand that everybody does not agree with me. But for every black, brown, white child in this town who would have the opportunity to know about Senator Davis, we need to make that happen. And for me, because of her work, because of where she, where she did most of her service, which is how we are connected through service, service to the Anchorage community, service to East High School, I cannot tell you how many scholarships we gave at East High School. I cannot tell you how many certificates we handed out to kids who got a 2.5, a 3.0, a 4.0. We did that for years and years. It's in that school still. It's in this community still, because these kids have come back. So, the one thing that is very depressing and very upsetting for me had to do with the appearance of us pitting one successful black woman against another. Dr. Athelja Davis was the first African-American principal at Fairview. She was much more than that, but that's where part of her legacy lies. The other part of, of her legacy lies in her service to the community, the things that she did to make sure kids were fed, they were taken care of, just like Senator Davis. So, we've, so, we can't, we can't, I've been explaining this, it seems like, now for two weeks. It is not Dr. Davis against Senator Davis. That's not what this is about. They have both earned their rights for places and given to this community in ways that people in this room will never do. All right? So, I, I just think that as we go through, this board has its will. If it has the will, it can do, make a decision tonight. We got so much more to deal with, so much more. So, we need to make a decision tonight so we can move on. And I would like to see East, Betty Davis East Anchorage High School, or however we end up getting that, getting it done, however we, it makes sense to, to figure out how we do this. I mean, we're just going around and, and, I mean, she's been dead now almost two years. She served on this board. And so, I, I just think that we need to get, we need to figure out what we're going to do tonight.
Oh, I still have a couple others. Oh, okay. Member Holloman?
Yes, thank you. And, and with your next-to-the-last statement, Member Bellamy brings up a really important point. A lot of the emails I've gotten have really emphasized the importance of including Anchorage in the name of the school. And on the East website, it is titled East High School, but it refers to it in different places as East Anchorage High School or EAHS. I, I didn't think this part was controversial, but what is the name of the high school right now officially? I'm not sure who to direct that question to.
Oh, we've been told that the Deed website says it's East High School, but we also have Principal Spinella here with us in the audience, and he might be able to help clarify as well. Thank you for hanging out with us tonight, Principal. Happy Principal Month.
The, the only thing I could say is, one of the original parts of the building, you can still see is painted over, it says East Anchorage High School. So, I don't know where the names came from, but, but that's, if you're standing from one side of the building, you're looking at the, towards the east side of the building, it's painted over white, but it says East Anchorage High School.
Okay, thank you. And Member Holloman, did you have any further?
Well, I think, I mean, it is commonly referred to that way on Deed pages, as well as more colloquially, East High School. I would like to ask Member Mitchell if she would consider changing her amendment, or accept as a friendly amendment, that it be named East Anchorage, Betty Davis East Anchorage High School.
I have no problem with that. That was what I had originally written, and then when I went to the ASD website, it listed it simply as East High School, so I changed it.
Member Marsette?
Oh, well, I, I have a question, Mr. Spinella. Sorry. So, what is on, like, athletic apparel and that sort of thing? Is it?
All of, all of the athletic apparel is East Anchorage High School.
East Anchorage High School.
The reason being is because someone mentioned it earlier, there are East High Schools all over the country.
Right, okay.
But East Anchorage is unique.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Hildy?
Got it. So, if this amendment passes, and East is just added on to, it sounds like, or Anchorage gets added into it officially, what is the functional consequence of it? Is it going to be expensive putting Betty Davis, like, a new outside sign, and that's it? Is it redoing a lot of things, like sports stuff, or are you just going to keep it East Anchorage, how everything is? I just want to know what the, like, what is the expected outcome?
Well, I think Dr. Bishop is probably best equipped to answer that, but as far as I know, the team is still going to be the Thunderbirds, and, you know, over time, the uniforms might get changed as they get switched out, but Dr. Bishop?
And I actually wouldn't be the one to, to talk about that. I think we give that back to the schools. Our, all those things about logos and mottos and, and names and all that really belong at that, the, the school level in regard to what they call themselves. So, I, I would present that back to the school, given the board's outcome.
Yeah, I would just say, we should clarify, because if we have, you know, we're like, oh, we're just kind of adding on the name, and we don't really expect anything to change, that's very different than saying we're renaming it, and as you transition to new things, you know, that's community expectations, and I want us to be clear. If we're okay with that, and I've heard from public testimony that there, it's okay if the jerseys say East Anchorage, so if that's, I don't know the answer, I just want us to be clear.
But we're talking about letterhead, and, I mean, there just needs to be a plan and an expectation from the board about a name, because the feeling that the expectation isn't just at this table, that it's probably greater than this table.
All right, so I did raise my hand. Okay. Actually, I haven't raised in the queue. So, I'm going to just take a quick moment to, just, I guess, share my thoughts. I adore Betty. She has made an impact in my life, you know, in this particular role, in incredibly meaningful ways. I do have concerns with this memorandum on many levels. The first one, to which Dr. Bishop has already talked about, is the policy and the AR aspect of it. I believe the administration did the best that they could to go through a renaming process, which it wasn't fully designed for. And so, I hold, you know, no fault towards the administration in any of this for trying to do something like this, and in the midst of a pandemic, having to reach out to the community in, you know, various different ways, electronic, and, you know, all, all sorts of that kind of stuff. I am concerned with this, the same way I get concerned with a last-minute change on a bond, where it is a substantive change without other voices in the process. We are hearing from one strong community, and I get that, but where's, where are the other voices? And we've seen some of the other emails that have been, you know, maybe opposed to this for their own reasons, but we've also had some very important points brought up, you know, about the rest of the East community, that, you know, they might, you know, they don't want to lose their, you know, diverse identity as part of this as well. And so, I have concerns that there's other components and other constituents and other parts of the community that are not understanding, you know, how the process works and what this, you know, can entail, you know, going down the line. Fundamentally, I have, just in this moment, I have a very difficult time putting the administrative, the board, the community time into naming an empty building. We need to get our kids back in school, and this just, this is just really hard, to name an empty building, when I really think our focus on every level needs to be, how do we get our kids back into it, as being our primary driver and our primary focus. I fully get that we need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time, and we should be able to do a lot of things, but it's empty, and that just hurts. And so, this process has been done, I think, you know, under the circumstances, but through it, I have learned about Dr. Davis and more about what Fairview wants. I have learned a whole bunch more through this, and I have more questions than I have answers. And for me, as a board member, I'm not prepared to vote on something like this tonight. I don't feel comfortable with it, and if I don't feel comfortable with it, then I vote no, because that's just the way I feel. It has nothing to do with the person by any stretch of the means. It is all because of the process for me. And I guess that's, that's where I stand right now, and I do take this as a very emotional thing, because it's an emotionally charged topic. And so, that's where I stand on it, you know, for the moment, but I, you know, welcome hearing about, you know, other thoughts. We still have the amendment to which we're speaking, and Member Bellamy, you are next up in the queue.
I just wanted to speak to the Member Hildy's inquiry regarding, you know, what does this mean? I mean, what this is, this means that the East High School T-birds will continue to exist. It means that we might, we would have to make changes over time, certainly the name of the school, certainly the letterhead, which is, oh, you know, which, it's an opportunity, and what that looks like and how that's done, that, that can, that goes back to the school. So, it's not, it, you know, and, and I, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out, how do we, yes, we want kids in school, but we also want, we want kids to have, we, we want to give our kids the opportunity to also have moments of, I don't know, it's not, it's more than diversity, it's more than inclusion, it's, it's, it's more than equity even. I mean, it's, it's that thing that we, we, that kids, that we don't ask kids about, number one. I mean, I don't, we don't ask kids, well, you, you know, parents decide what school they go to. We don't say, well, you want to go to this school because it's named after this person, or do you want to go to this school because it's named after that person? That's not how we do it. What we do, we do the best for all kids. So, every kid in that school will benefit from this. It's not about, it's not a black thing. It's not a thing about, you know, how we get it done. The staffs will figure that out. I think this body just needs to figure out what we're going to do, and do the right thing for me.
Thank you. Next up- Thank you. Next up in the queue is Member Holloman.
Well, this has been in the works for a long time. We've all gotten a great deal of feedback on it. To me, I think it just comes down to the fact that Betty Davis is a towering figure who broke a lot of barriers. Are we going to do something of high significance or not? And, and a lot of the community and the people that were closest to her suggested this, picked this, it's been through a process and circled around for a number of times. I, I think it's fitting, and I do think that it will emulate what we did with the Anchorage International Airport. When I first heard the name, it sounded really awkward. They said it's going to be the Ted Stevens Anchorage International Airport. I thought, well, how weird is that? Well, we all know that it's the Anchorage Airport. And yet, we are all also very aware of the fact that it was renamed to honor someone who did so much for transportation in the state and all kinds of other infrastructure projects. We stop and think about it, and that's the point. But it didn't mean that everyone started calling it the Stevens Airport, or that people that were coming here had to change. I, I think it will be among most people, most of the time, they'll be the East High T-Birds. When people say, hey, I went to East Anchorage, or I'm going to East Anchorage, there won't be any confusion about where they go to school, there won't be a turning point where the heritage changed, or all the trophies became mislabeled or anything. It'll be crystal clear to everybody, but at times, I, I think the history teachers and government teachers will talk about the legacy. And it will be transmitted that way. She developed a legacy that we ought to honor, that ought to be passed on. I hope people come to embrace it. But I don't have the illusion they're gonna use it in everyday language. And that, that's okay. I think that's perfectly okay. It'll come a point where the letters on the building get changed. Principal Spinella mentioned that he saw East Anchorage High School in a painted-over part. These things have a way of sticking around for a long, long time. So I'm in support of the amendment, which puts me in support of the motion once it's amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Member Mitchell.
I do think we've had almost two years of discussing this, and we've heard from a lot of community members, and East was in Betty's district, and I absolutely in my heart feel that this was the right thing to do, so I don't see any reason to postpone it, and I, I just wanted to add that.
Member Marsette?
So regardless of how I vote, I am concerned, I don't know what the process is after the voting. If we vote to change the name, I mean, what, I don't want to just say, oh, it's left up to whatever. I mean, I think we need to know what is the process and what, what does it mean to rename a high school, besides, I mean, are we gonna go out and change the uniforms right away, or, I mean, we can't afford this stuff. Put a name on the building, yes, I think that's appropriate right away, or as soon as we can. But change the letterhead, that's one thing, but I, I guess I, you know, I, I want to honor Betty, and if we name the East Anchorage High School Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School, but I also want to honor the tradition of East High School, and I think we can do both. So I just want, I want to have a better understanding of what does happen after we rename this high school. Can the sports team East Anchorage High School? I mean, you're saying yes, but I don't know. I mean, I don't have any assurances or know for sure, because we never renamed a school before. So it's not that I'm against it, I just, I just don't know what happens.
Member Bellamy?
And I don't have the, the answer. I mean, we've, this is a first for me as well. I would think that the school would have conversations, the superintendent, the schools will have conversations, and they would, you know, because I, to me, the T-Birds will still, it stands, all of that. And they, they usually replace sports uniforms every five, six years anyway. So there, there has to be a phase-in plan or a gradual plan. That's what it sounds like to me. But I have to leave that up to the superintendent.
And just for, for future, I know I, in five years, when you mentioned, I most likely won't be here, but I don't think that it's appropriate or fair to people to push it down, because the expectation when you change a name is to change a name. And so are we saying that your uniforms in five years would have something else on it, and I think the, what happens, like, South Anchorage High School uses, and, and I've had some texts from people who grew up and said they know it as East Anchorage High School, East for short, West Anchorage High School, West for short. The reason South uses South, S-A-H-S, is because Service is already Service High School, and, you know, so there is an understanding. I would say that each Anchorage is something that's known and used, at least from people who are in the system, but there's an expectation, and so outwinding the tation, rather than saying, well, when we buy new ones, because if we, if we leave it, the intent of what this board wants might not be what actually will turn out, and we'll have a whole nother community issue that we're leaving out there because we're just pushing it out there. So if, if the board votes, I would expect some expectation about what, what it is that, that you'd like. And, and names change, some have changed mascots. I mean, it's not that it's never been done in other places, it's just that we don't have a policy on that. And so it would be, if there was some intent from the board to make this more than just the name, then I guess there isn't an expectation then to change uniforms, names anywhere else. And so if that's the case, that's what we can communicate. But it, it would help the people in the school who are there now, and those who will be there first from now, to refer back to the expectation from the board that made the decision to change the name, of what does that mean for us? And then we give it to them, and then we have them sort through it and, and move through that policy. But I think it is fair to give some direction, to me at least, because then I'm caught in the middle of it again, about what it is, the true intention, because I've heard just co-brand, we could still call it East. I've even heard that from testimony. And then I've heard, when it's time, we can change things, and so understanding the true intent of what you would like to happen, I think, would meet the, the, your action that is going to result from the vote.
I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment.
Oh, boy.
Pardon?
It's an amendment to, to this amendment?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I would like to, we change the name of East Anchorage High School to Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School. However, that the school remains as East Anchorage High School when it comes to sports or anything like that, because I don't, I want to honor Betty, but I want to honor the tradition of the school. So I'm not sure how to word that, but that would mean, you know, putting the name on the school, the letterhead, that sort of thing, but you keep the...
Let's take a, let's take a, take two minutes to write it down and write it out, so that we have something for Katie for one. And then it will need a second, so while you're, we're just gonna pause for two minutes to get this done, because I can't report the discussion without it, so. So two minute at ease.
Trying to do it one more. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it might make them both happy, but otherwise the school can still, you know. Then somebody will be upset, but I don't know.
But it was fine. She, she needs a second. Okay, Alicia said, Alicia said she seconded it. Okay, so, Star, if you would, on the screen is your amendment to the amendment. If you could, please read it, make sure it reads as you intended. It was seconded by Alicia. All right. Now, I've got, you get to speak to your amendment, to your amendment first.
I believe this is a win-win for everyone. I think this will keep the tradition of the Anchorage High School, as far as sports and activities, and the Thunderbird, yet it also honors Betty Davis's name. I think it's a win-win.
Okay?
I don't think we had the motion read into the mic.
Okay, it's, it's, so the amendment to the amendment, number one. I move to rename East High School the Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School, with the name of East Anchorage High School continuing to be used for sports and activities, and the Thunderbird mascot remains the same on record. You spoke to it. Next up in the queue is Member Holloman.
I, I mean, I get the intent, and I'm okay with the intent, but I would also say we don't really need to do this, that the board and board directives don't ever go down to the level of uniforms or what the people in a school actually refer to their school as and different things. We would be changing the official name, and so at some point, we would change the letters on the outside of the building. We will print the certificates of graduation differently. And in those kind of ceremonial moments, the full name would be spelled out, and, and it would be obvious to people. But when players are running onto the field, they're not gonna have the whole name of the jersey on there. The Service doesn't even have Robert Service High School on their jerseys. They say Service. Or a big S. It, it just all depends. So I, I think we're concerning ourselves with something that we don't normally control anyway. I do appreciate what Superintendent said. We should make that clear, that we're not trying to overreach that far. These are things that I think are best left up to people that are planning pep rallies and that, that pick out the jerseys and do those things. That normally never comes to us anyway. It's all in the name. They, they have that attitude, they won't be, they won't be violating anything, they won't be, I, I think we can just do the original amendment to the motion that was brought before us tonight, and it will be fine, and we can move on after that.
Thank you, and Dr. Bishop has a comment?
Thank you, Member Holloman. I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, because that's, actually, in a perfect world, those management-type of things just at the school level is actually a really good thing. The, the purpose really for my comments was gauging the amount of communication the board received from both sides, of the people who knew this and, and the efforts from an alumni and the effort, efforts from the Black Caucus to really have input. So we know that it's emotional, we know that it's personal, and if going to, then, because we, we found the statements of, we're just doing a name, I foresee there's going to be a continued push on both sides at the next level. And if the board says the intent was just for us to change the name, the other decisions, what the high school decides is, is okay. I, I believe that, that that might be all that's needed, but I think maybe verbally that should be shared. I, I think that there's a lot tied into this, and I'm just saying it because we, I mean, honestly, I received information from people who graduated 50 years ago, and so it's emotional for those graduates, and it's emotional for the people now to honor Betty Davis and her accomplishments. From a five-year seeing in, it will present additional challenges to the people at the school, and if the board is saying we support the people at the school for making those decisions, then that is the comment that needs to be made or shared, but otherwise, we're leaving this undue. But if the board says, we trust the school to make those decisions as they move forward, then, then that's it. But I, I just want to know your direction for that, so that we can give that same guidance to the many, many people, thousands now, who have weighed in on this, thousands. And so I think it's pretty important. I just, the intent of just a name, if that's it, then I think people understand that, but without a name, especially if it's on a school, that there's other expectations with that, so I'm, I'm just trying to gauge the desire of the board, and if it comes in your, your action, that's okay, or in another manner, as long as we know it, I'm good to, to move forward. Because I will be asked for direction on this tomorrow. No, I will be asked as soon as the vote is over. Someone will say, now, what am I supposed to do? What would you like? But, you know, and I just want to know what it is, the intent of the board.
Thank you. Member Mitchell?
I largely agree with what Member Holloman said. I just want to make sure that when the graduation certificate is issued, or when the declamation award is given, or, you know, National Honor Society, the name, the official name of the high school will be Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School. But as far as the mascot and all that kind of stuff, I don't think boards ever get involved with that.
Member Hildy?
So I, yeah, it just doesn't sound that inspiring to me, like, the way we're talking about it, it's like, it's like a little thing. We're gonna put a name on some letterhead, and we're gonna put the name above the building, and then we're going to say it at graduation. When we talk about, so if you go and do the elementary school, then you get like a Bowman Day. You get kids who are young and just learning about what's possible for their future, and... You get kids who are young and just learning about what's possible for their future, and you get a concentrated area of resources in our community to help children. So as I'm listening to how we're talking, like, I'm just, it doesn't sound like we're doing something. You know, the first recommendation was to name this, and I was like, well, that's not doing anything. I don't see the effect versus at an elementary school where you can really embrace. It doesn't have to be like, oh, it's Betty Davis, but don't say that part. Like, it can just be Davis Elementary School. It can be, you know, confidently that. It doesn't have to be like an afterthought or a partial thing. That's my hangup right now.
Member Bellway?
Did you say me?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
So, you know, the way I look at it is, you know, Senator Davis has a rich history. The school has to make that come alive. That's what schools do. They make things come alive. They make people, they teach, you know what we do. I mean, so this would be no different than that. Whether we create, whether the school decides within her history, within her legacy, how are they going to blend those two legacies? I mean, we're not casting aside one and minimizing the other. That's not my intent, and I don't think the school will look at it like that either. They have the opportunity to create this Betty Davis East Anchorage High School, and that creation comes from the history that exists and the future that's to come. So we can't, you know, so that's what we do. Willett Bowman has a Willett Bowman Day, because somebody at some point said, "We need to do this for these reasons." So I think that's what we've got to trust, that the school is going to make those accommodations. They're going to make those changes. They're going to create the environment for which they're going to give her legacy, along with the legacy that already exists and the history. They're going to put it together and make something wonderful. I agree with that.
Thank you. Just because I have your hands still up, did you have another comment to make? Okay, Member Mersett?
Yeah, I know it's getting late, and we've got a lot more testimony, but I, we have to give some kind of direction, because just like Dr. Bishop said, if we just vote to rename the high school to Betty Davis High School, Anchorage High School, East Anchorage High School, there has to be direction from the board on what that entails. And it's not that I don't trust the schools or whatever, but I'm trying to create a win-win for everyone, so that those that didn't want to rename it because of the history of East Anchorage, that, you know, in negotiations, you always try to create a win-win, and that's what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to honor Betty Davis, and I'm trying to keep the integrity of what alumni have said that they want to keep. So I'm just trying to do what I think is best somehow for everyone. I'm not trying to take the role of the school away from them. I'm just trying to know that, you know, and, you know, down the line, they can change it, I'm sure. I mean, you know, we change policy all the time, so just because we say something doesn't mean it's written in stone, but I think at this point and in this time, this is the correct thing to do.
Thank you. I'm going to take an opportunity to just weigh in and say, I do support this amendment to the amendment, because I do feel like it honors as many of the comments, you know, that we have got, from, you know, what it was to what it is to what it can be. And it broadens, you know, more of the representation, I think, of what we got, you know, as feedback. And so I would support this as it is.
If somebody's in the queue...
Yeah, in the queue, you have to let them talk, but then after that, the vote.
All right.
I know. I'm the one that told everybody.
Call for the vote, and your last.
I'll try to be quick. If this does make people feel better about it, I think that's okay. I do think we're doing something very significant. We are changing the official name of the school, and there is a reason we're not changing it to the Betty Davis High School. It is because we are explicitly including East Anchorage to retain that legacy, to retain the name that alumni and everybody in this town is familiar with. So I think it works out the same either way. At the school level, they're going to do what they're going to do, and they're going to come up with nicknames and other things. The board will never interfere, I hope. But I'll support this as a way of moving through it, and we can honor Betty the way we should and get on with our business. Thank you.
All right, with all comments being closed now, we will go ahead and take a vote on this amendment to the amendment. Board members, please vote. I'll go back and find. All right, so the amendment to the amendment passes with six yays and one nay, which brings us back to the main motion.
To the amendment.
Well...
The modified amendment.
We just voted on the amendment.
No, we voted to amend the amendment.
Wow.
So now we're going to vote on the amendment.
So we're basically taking the same vote, then?
That's correct.
All right, so let's do it. Okay, hold on. Waiting for Katie. Okay, that could have been. Okay. Now we are voting on... Yeah.
Exactly this time.
Yep. And we're calling for the vote, yep. Mr. Donnelly, did you want to give a voice vote on this, or is your computer screen have another vote option on it? All right, amended amendment passes with six yays and one nay. So the last one is on the final motion, ASD memorandum 040 as amended. Everybody ready to vote? All right, Katie's getting the details in, and...
Wait a minute.
Yes?
So we're now voting on the First Amendment as amended?
The main motion, the main memorandum as amended. Yep.
So really, the amendment is changing the entire motion, so it's going to be the third vote on the same thing.
It is. Yep. All right, board members, please vote.
Excuse me, I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't even see it, Dave. I was in the wrong screen. I am so sorry. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. So I don't think this is appropriate to vote on this at this time in this manner. It's very different than anything the public's ever seen before. This is not a proposal that anybody in the public has been asked to say yes or no, or even comment on. This thing has completely evolved into a whole different proposal than what public notice was given for, and it's very concerning, especially as emotional this is to the community. Second, it's not what any committee has recommended. It's not what the municipality recommended. And I'm concerned that without that appropriate public comment, because we haven't even opened this back up for public comment on this specific proposal, which is very different than anything anybody got notice about before now. And the superintendent's made some very good points. This is a little bit more direction, but it certainly isn't going anywhere near the kind of direction that's needed for something as significant as renaming a high school. I came here tonight completely prepared to vote to name a school in Betty's honor. I served with Senator Davis, and I want to name a school in her honor, but I also want the public to have a fair opportunity to comment on what this board is proposing to do, and to vote on this motion in this form at this time does not provide the public with any, even the resemblance of a fair opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
This was a suggestion back from the municipal committee. When I went through the ASD committee, it came out in the form that we started with tonight. The public, I've got dozens and dozens and dozens of emails on both sides of this, and people put it up on social media. It's been discussed a lot. It's not coming out of the blue. This has been discussed for a long time. This is what was brought to us originally by members of the community as a starting point. So I do understand that when we change an action substantially, we should think about stepping back and starting the process, but in this case, the process is about what we're doing to honor Betty Davis, and we're still on that. This is not unexpected. This is not something that nobody thought of that just came up at the last minute. This is actually what's been kicking around for a very long time now. So I, this is not like some of the bills in the legislature that go in one way and come to the fore, is something completely different. This is very much in line. I've thought of it a lot. I've heard from a lot of people about it, and I feel very prepared to vote on it tonight, and I think the public has had a very fair chance to weigh in on both sides.
Member Mitchell?
Yeah, I would agree with Member Holloman. It has been in the newspaper. We have gotten, I think, probably close to 100 emails. It has been out there. I think there's been plenty of opportunity for people who have, I mean, I think it certainly is out there in a much bigger way now than it was when it was simply a poll on Facebook. So I think that people who were concerned, you know, who have a strong opinion have been able to voice that. So I feel absolutely 100% confident in making this decision, and I think that's the role we play as a board, is take that community input. But as Mr. Moore mentioned earlier, you know, you can take the pulse of the public, but ultimately, we were elected to make these decisions that we think are the right ones, and I absolutely, as I said before, I'm 100% certain that this is the right thing to do to honor Senator Davis.
Member Mersett?
I'll just make it quick. I think I am following what the community wants based on the feedback that we've received, and so that's the reason I put this amendment forward. So I think I am listening to the community, as I said that I would do in my vote here, so that's all I have to say. So nobody's in the queue, call for the vote.
Yeah, okay. Well, Member Donnelly?
I was waiting to make sure nobody else wanted to speak. There were members that hadn't spoken yet. If this is the question, I'm going to support it, because I support naming a school after Senator Davis. I don't believe that this particular proposition has ever really been, I don't remember this version of this proposition being put out to the public for any kind of response. This has morphed into something very different, and I believe the public needs a chance to voice, I really would like to hear from them and take some of the criticism of the poll that was done into consideration and do a more appropriate, more extensive polling operation to see how the public really feels about it out there without being subject to criticism of the type of polling that was done. So I think it'd be more appropriate to table this at this time, rather than proceed with something that I don't believe has gotten proper public notice, and so I would move to table and tell at a time certain when a actual more extensive polling could be conducted to really determine the public's opinion on this proposal.
Are you making that formal motion, Miss Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Is there a second by any board members? I'm not seeing a second by any member of the board at this time. Not seeing any other hands in the queue. Let's go ahead and call this final vote for ASD memorandum 040 as amended. ASD memorandum 040 passes unanimously with seven yays and zero nays. Step?
Point of order, President. We might want to go ahead and vote to extend the school board meeting.
Yes, I will take a motion to extend our timeline.
I move to extend our board meeting to no later than midnight.
My second. Any opposed? All right, all in favor? Quick straw poll, all right. Meeting is extended.
I move to...
You ready? Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 035, the reallocation of $2,143,084 from completed 2012 bond proposition one, building life extension projects, $474,926 from completed 2014 bond proposition one, traffic safety projects, and $473,690 from Mears Middle School roof replacement project, for a total of $391,700 to support design and construction for the Mears Middle School exterior siding and window replacement project.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions or comments on ASD memorandum 035? Not seeing any. If board members could please proceed to vote. ASD memorandums... Oh, hold on just a second. The memorandum did pass, but, oh, there, it came through. Yay! ASD memorandum 035 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Woo-hoo! ASD memorandum 035 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Woo hoo. Next.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 036 and pass Board Policy 9250.1, Community Events and Invitations.
Second.
Yes, I can do. Any board members have any comments or questions on ASD memorandum number 036? Seeing none, if board members could please proceed to vote. ASD memorandum 036 passes with six yays and one nay. Moving on to our non-action items, the next, we have two items on it. Did anybody wish to pull either one?
I would recommend that we don't pull any because we have few, I mean, I know we probably want to discuss things more, but because of the time and because we still have people that have been waiting to testify, it would be my recommendation that we don't pull anything. But of course, I know board members can do what they want, but that's just my recommendation.
Do I see any board members wanting to pull anything?
I, I think probably the board would like to continue the discussion of the task force update. But I do concur with Member Marsette that we should get to the public testimony. Is there any way to do public testimony first and then if we have time, come back?
There are not that many people left.
Could, I guess I would move that we, I don't know if it has to be a motion, that we move the public testimony up and then if there is time for discussion and if the board chooses to go that direction, that we do it afterwards.
I'm good with that, moving, doing our public testimony right now to ensure that we get them in before the midnight deadline and we can go from there. So we're just going to go ahead and do that.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Doing it as a presidential thing though. All right, so public testimony. Really quick, checking the list to see, it looks like Speaker number 22 is still with us, Michelle Foss. Michelle, are you with us tonight?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am, or sir.
Hello?
Just one second, Miss Foss, Member Donnelly.
Point of order, you have to call for a vote. It, it takes a super majority to amend the agenda. We could be really quick, but, and we'd be totally in order if you just called for a vote. And if nobody, or just ask if anybody objects.
Does anybody object to the changing of the agenda to put public testimony first? There are no objections. Thank you, Member Donnelly. Michelle, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you for waiting so very long. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much and thank you for this time. My name's Michelle Foss. My husband Brian and I are parents of a 15-year-old who attends Bartlett High School. Our son struggled to stay on top of his sixth classes last spring when we moved to crisis learning. This fall, however, our son was able to make great progress with having just three online classes to focus on. And he had three amazing teachers that made connections with him. Was it different? Yes. Was it challenging? Sometimes. Was it worth it for his safety? Absolutely. Our son also played football for the Bartlett JV team, and their team had a very shortened conditioning time in August. After three games, they were on a 14-day quarantine because a player tested positive for COVID-19. Because of this, the team missed two games and had a very condensed four-game season. However, our son did not miss any school since school was online. If school had been face-to-face, as has been announced, our son would have had to quarantine and miss school for two weeks. We're thankful he was not in face, face lane. That we knew he was safe, his teachers, his coaches and other adults with whom he worked also were able to be safe. With the number of COVID-19 cases in the Anchorage municipality placing us firmly in a high-risk red level, we can't comprehend how you were even contemplating bringing anyone back to face-to-face learning. In the spring, the number of cases that closed schools was so much lower than it is now. It's unconscionable that you want to take the chances with the lives of our children at any grade level. Our son cannot be a guinea pig in your social experiment. Even if you were a kindergartner or just starting school, we wouldn't consider it. His life is the most important thing to us and we won't risk it. But now we're forced to have to opt out of our school and put him in virtual school where he won't have those same connections. We're very concerned with the idea that students will be in school, return to online learning for days or weeks as new COVID cases occur, then go back to school and back home. You only have to look around you at the Matu and Kenai School Districts to see that that is what is happening. This is a negligent seesaw on which you oversee students. The disruption that will occur and the learning progression that will be interrupted by this back and forth is absolutely unacceptable. We know there will be school closures. Our son and we believe every student needs the continuity and consistency of staying online. In addition to being parents, we're also ASD teachers. We realize that our lives may not be as important to you as the lives of our students. However, we know firsthand that you cannot make any classroom safe for our students. The amount of PPE and sanitizing materials that will be provided is not going to be sufficient. The space available in our classrooms, we know, for social distancing is not sufficient. The plan that you still don't have finalized for student safety is going to fall short. As teachers, we know that as a district, we can't keep our students safe if they are brought back to school right now. As parents, we are horrified that you are even considering this. Please keep all kids out of school until it is safe for all students and all adults to return to class. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to circle back up to a previous speaker, Laura Wren. Laura, are you with us tonight?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you so very much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Bishop, I'm speaking as a retired teacher, a friend of many school staff, and a member of the community who is totally opposed to reopening schools in November or even before January. By the end of tonight, you'll have heard many reasons why students are safer in online school. Students are successfully learning. Children can and do get and spread the virus. Rooms without adequate ventilation, PPE sanitation protocols, and room for social distancing will not be safe. School will be different. No group for partner work, no activity to get close, and no group play at recess. Disruptions from constant opening and closing of buildings as other buildings and districts do. And most importantly, the risk of death or years of impaired health for students, staff, and families. COVID-19 is causing a mental health crisis. Everyone is struggling to deal with the ramifications of a worldwide pandemic. And despite what some people believe, it is real, it is dangerous, it is deadly. I'm not discounting the needs of struggling students. Every year, there are students in crisis. Schools and teachers do their best to reach all students, but they never do it in a way that puts their health and others at risk. Why not provide addenda money for staff willing to lead after-school groups of at-risk students, which is something done in normal years? Teach FCL and tutor them, provide safe socialization. Be creative about how to meet their needs. But listen to your teachers. The majority of students are doing fine in online school. Constant disruptions due to quarantining will impact their success. Teachers and family dying will result in permanent emotional damage. Schools all over the country are finding that face-to-face school increases community spread. If I could use one phrase that epitomizes Dr. Bishop's administration, it would be data-driven decisions. I taught middle school math, the math used in everyday life. I use those skills to keep informed about Alaska's COVID data. I don't have to tell you the details, just that we're in the midst of rampant community spread and experts predict this third wave will be huge, will be huge. If closing schools was wise in March, why is opening wise now? Why is now the time to exacerbate community spread, to interrupt the carefully taught routines, to risk lives? I urge you to vote to continue online school for all grades. Otherwise, each of you who condones opening schools will be personally responsible for COVID spread and any deaths related to face-to-face schooling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Speaker number 23, Lisa Sparrow. Lisa, are you with us tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much for waiting. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
My name is Lisa Sparrow, and I'm testifying because I am confused about the decision to open schools for primary grades on November 16th. Our daily rates in Anchorage are far higher than they were when the year started online in August and much higher than when schools went online in the spring. Ironically, the rates have skyrocketed since the announcement to start classes on November 16th was made. What makes starting school now safe when it was not safe before? Has the science changed and told us that higher rates of COVID-19 in a community are not a risk for increased infection? Science tells us that to avoid closed, science tells us to avoid closed, poorly ventilated spaces, crowded spaces, and close, close contacts with conversation. Those three Cs, closed spaces, crowded spaces, and close contacts define a classroom. In a classroom with 20-plus students, it is not possible to have social distancing of three feet, much less six feet. There are no plexiglass barriers. There will be talking. That is how learning happens. Again, has science told us that the three Cs are not important in slowing infection rates? I realize we are learning more about COVID-19 daily, but we do not know enough yet. I've read reports about schools opening and not increasing their community spread. I've also read reports of schools closing due to rising cases. There are studies that say young children don't seem to spread the virus and studies that say, well, maybe they do. There are daily reports of seemingly healthy people dying from or dealing with serious long-term issues due to COVID-19. When the initial move to online learning began, the district stressed the need for schools to be a community leader in slowing the spread of COVID. Closing schools prevented the nearly 50,000 students and staff of ASD from mixing at schools and then heading home to families and potentially spreading the virus. That decision probably helped slow the spread of COVID-19 in Anchorage early on. But now with infection rates far higher than in March or August, classes are set to begin, is it worth the risk? Maybe it will work and cases will stay low. Maybe it will not work and students will have to return to online learning. Maybe students or staff or family members will die. So what has changed that makes it safe to, that makes it safe to open schools? Nothing. We know a little bit more about COVID, but not enough to make in-person schools safe. I spoke as both a teacher and a citizen of Anchorage. I want both our schools and our city to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, in person, Kyle Kaiser. Thank you so much for your patience tonight. You've got three minutes and the floor is yours. As soon as the mic turns on.
Okay, now it's green. My name is Kyle Kaiser. I'm a proud parent of two children in Spanish immersion. One thing I want to address is the suicide rate is going up across the country. Regardless of what demographic you choose, there's been a 20% increase in veteran suicide. So to say that it's because we're not putting our kids in school, I don't believe is accurate. You're dealing with a pandemic. Depression, anxiety are through the roof already. The people we're talking about with these issues are mostly high school students or higher education levels than K-32. I don't see how it applies to them. We keep citing high school sports as a validation for what we're doing, but we're not talking about that age group. We talk a lot about outside the state districts, but we don't look down the road and see what's going on with Matu. The rates have tripled in the last three weeks. Why do we expect it to be different? My daughter will be going back to school, my son won't. How do I explain to them who are only two grades apart, why one's staying home and one's going back to school? Like I said, we're doing Spanish immersion. It hasn't been easy. It's been a challenge, but they finally have the system down again and are functioning, and they're doing well. I worry about the setbacks if we have to go back and forth and do a yo-yo effect and what that'll, what toll that'll take on, on, on my children. And just because some parents let their children go to sleepovers and attend parties doesn't mean that we all are. So please don't assume that all of our kids are socializing and doing all these crazy events and that there aren't those of us that are concerned and take a different approach to it. Principals and teachers being responsible for their plan, that draws some concern. When we had a conversation about this, I was told, and I've heard there's providers coming, which is reassuring, because I was told it was like looking at cardboard cutouts with plastic tape to them, and I was like, absolutely not. Those are really the highlights, and I really just want everyone to consider what, what we're doing this for. How do I explain to my child who might be asymptomatic carrier that comes home and gives it to my elderly mother-in-law and she passes that, where we had to try and reopen things when we didn't have the clear understanding on how this is actually going to affect everything? There's a lot more at stake than just getting our kids back to school. They're adapting. I mean, they're doing well. I don't see the need at this point to rush into this, especially right before the holidays and typical flu season. How are we going to differentiate between someone who has a sinus infection and someone who has COVID? Now I'm going to be sticking something down my daughter's nose to get her tested. She gets the sniffles, she gets sent home from school. It just, there's a lot of logistical problems with doing this as far as I see from a parent's standpoint. Aside from now having one kid getting to school, getting picked up from school, the other one staying at home, going to school. And I know I'm not alone. Thank you for your time and working so late on this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next up in the phone queue, Speaker number, it's 25, Andrea Gardner. Andrea, are you with us this evening?
I am, hi.
All right, ma'am, you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Gardner. I am an ASD kindergarten and first-grade teacher. I'm also a first-grade parent. On October 15th, Dr. Bishop, you wrote, "ASD students, particularly our youngest elementary students, are missing out on essential foundational skills. Our current approach cannot provide the results our students deserve." On what grounds? "I, like so many of my colleagues, spent my summer comprehensively preparing for the challenge of virtual teaching. I sought every applicable resource I could find preparing for this immense pedagogical challenge, and I am not unique in these efforts. It took a few weeks for my current students to connect and settle into our learning routine. Yet, connect they did, and now we are thriving as a class. We have morning meaning, we sing, we play games, we dance, we do experiments, we have engaging number tasks and hands-on math lessons. My time with my students is the highlight of my day. Their assessments and work samples indicate learning consistent with any face-to-face classes that I've ever taught. Yet, as soon as we go back to quote, 'face-to-face learning,' unquote, all of our exuberant routines will go out the window. My kindergartners and first graders will be sitting in their seats for five and a half hours a day, limited in their interactions and their movement. School is not about a building. It is about connection. My son, for example, is just as connected to his grandmother in Vermont as he is to his grandmother in Alaska, thanks to the technological magic of FaceTime. Virtual learning may not be the most developmentally appropriate option for first graders. However, it is far more developmentally appropriate than in a sedentary, sterile environment that will be required in order to attempt to keep our students safe while in a school building. Telling students that we will be going back to school in November is not true. We are currently in school. Worse yet, this plan does not account for the lack of continuity of learning for our students. In our current virtual model, I have had near-perfect attendance. This will not be possible with students and teachers having to quarantine for a number of reasons. It is absurd to think about navigating a situation in which my students are regularly missing weeks of school. It is overwhelming to imagine maintaining an online classroom and an in-person classroom simultaneously so as to provide equitable learning to students forced to quarantine. As it is, I am currently working double my contractual hours every week. Double. And unquestionably, worst of all, is the possibility that this unsubstantiated new plan can result in the loss of my students or colleagues' lives. My number-one job as a teacher is to keep my students safe. I will not be able to do that come November 16th. Members of the board, sending my kiddos back to school at the height of this global pandemic is not providing the results our students deserve. The energy, time, and money required to plan for and return to in-person schooling is enormous. I believe it makes much more sense to allow students and teachers to commit to virtual classrooms and focus on making these classes work as best as they possibly can. All the resources currently expensed, yes."
Andrea?
Yep.
Apologies, the three minutes is up.
Oh, okay, well.
Thank you so much.
Please, please don't force us back.
Thank you. Next up is Speaker number 27, Tanya Reed. Tanya, are you with us this evening?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much for waiting. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Anchorage School Board. I'm calling in today as a con- I'm calling in today as a concerned mother, parent, daughter and citizen. According to your website, two of your core values are safety and responsiveness. I recognize that going back to in-person classes has become an emotionally charged issue. And then until the announcement about returning to school, I felt that the school board had lived up to those values. We teach our children they should be open and honest and that we respect those who know more than us. Teachers, principals, the superintendent, because they possess something that we need, knowledge. So why now? Why are we, the largest school district in the state, forcing kids to go back to school when all the scientific data shows there is a spike in cases? In addition, flu season is upon us. What is the protocol for children who feel unwell, have a cough or any other symptom attributed to COVID-19? Remembering that some of these symptoms are common with the flu and common colds. Does every child have to have a negative COVID test before they can go to school? And who will pay for this testing? Have you had one of these tests? I've personally had two and I can tell you that my children will not submit to multiple tests. It's hard enough to come to their flu shots each year. I believe that this creates a culture that tells kids that they should hide their symptoms so they would not be forced to get a nasal swab. Or will they be forced to be out of school for 14 days to make sure that they don't have COVID? How will they learn then? I have four kids in ASD, two of whom are in the immersion program, and they will be forced to go or they will lose their spot in those immersion classes. When this all began last spring break, ASD said that they would come up with a way to re- review the actual data and use that data to make a decision for when it would be safe for kids to return to school. Now the numbers are spiking and so we just throw out that data? Please help this make sense. Why would we send them back before the holidays? Is it hard? Yes. Believe me, I know. My kids miss their friends, they miss being out of the house, and I can only speak for my situation. And that is this. My children live with their grandfather who is in his third round of chemotherapy. I personally have a heart condition and I'm on immunosuppressant drug. If COVID is brought into our house through ASD, my children will likely attend both their mothers' and grandfather's funeral. Will ASD set up a fund so that these kids can receive a lifetime benefit of mental health services because some adults decided against the data to let them go back? Will you set up a college fund for those kids who lose a parent who can no longer assist them in college? Yes, masks are not fun. Kids are anti. But you on the Anchorage School Board, you ran for positions, many of you beat out opponents who wanted the seat you're sitting in now. And I implore you to ask why you wanted to be here at all. Why did you choose to be on this board? Oh, am I out of time?
You are.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 28, Elizabeth Congdon McGee. Elizabeth, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
You sure? Thank you so much for your patience. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm coming to you kind of speaking on a different, I've heard all the testimonies and although I agree and I see both sides of it, I'm coming to you from the school counseling perspective. So, good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Bishop and community members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Elizabeth Congdon McGee and I am the current Assistant Executive Director of the Alaska School Counselor Association and a school counselor with ASD. As of right now, there are talks and processes being put into place for some groups to return back to school face-to-face. If we do, I really want you as a school board and superintendent to encourage your school administration to utilize your school counselors to be available for students and staff. School counselors are considered certified staff, which puts us in the pool of staff to sub in classrooms for teachers. According to the Anchorage, according to the American School Counselor Association, which is where our standards and ethics are based out of, that covering classes when teachers are absent or to create teacher planning time is considered an inappropriate activity for a school counselor. School counselors will need to be available for the trauma issues that may walk through the door, as well as be available for students, staff and families. If going face-to-face, this will be another change and change is hard for people. School counselors are trained to deal with many of the issues that may arise. Not all elementary schools are fully staffed with a full-time school counselor. So those schools that have two schools, those school counselors that have two schools or a backup school will be doing double duty during this time. ASD has phenomenal school counselors at every level in this district and many times they are not utilized in the areas of their expertise and that is truly sad. I will close with this statement from Carolyn Stone, author of School Counseling Principles, Ethics and Law, the fourth edition. She states, ASCA recommends that 80% of school counselors' time to be in direct and indirect service to students as part of the counseling program that impacts all students. School counselors should discuss with their administration about the student needs that may not be met or addressed as a result of serving as a substitute teacher and what the contingency plan is if a school counselor has an emergency to deal with. Sharing data or results about the school counseling program impact is a great way to show why school counselors should not be pulled. I urge you to have your administration sit and talk to their school counselors and come up with a plan as to not pull school counselors to sub, but to allow them to be available for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is speaker number 29, Amy Halonix. Amy, are you with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for your patience. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you guys too for, uh, your patience. First of all, I'm sorry to disappoint some of you for the fact that some of us teachers use social media. People communicate this way now. We need a way to share info. Some of us are scared. I hope that I heard on social, I hope that when I heard on social media about YMCA COVID cases at certain schools being kept hidden from the school, I hope that's fake news. I hope it's not true that a principal asked a teacher why they were more concerned with their own health than with their students' education. That is not a fair question to ask. We are being told to get used to COVID. We can't let it stop us. I don't buy it. We're entering the third wave. The military is enforcing more stringent rules. Thirty schools in the Kenai are closed. What does foot social distancing, when possible, really mean? You say that to cover the fact that class sizes are too big for us to open. I'm seeing 23 kids every day. There are many bigger classes. It won't be possible to be six feet apart, just like there will be more than 15 students handing papers back to the teachers. We've been at this for seven months. You can't blame increased suicides, family trauma and despair on the teacher's reluctance to go back to work in unsafe conditions. These problems existed well before COVID. Where is community support for these kids now? Will communities sacrifice sleepovers, playdates, travel, sports to lower the cases and get the schools open? After seven months, can't we get services together to keep those kids safe and let other kids continue safely with their successful online learning? I urge everyone to read Ben Walker's article, Teachers Are Failing Kids, The Community Is Failing Our Kids. It's a very good article. When I was younger, I went sea kayaking on Christmas break as a teacher, my first year teaching. Prior to that trip, I was so worried about what would happen to my fourth grade class if I flipped over and I drowned in the ocean, in the Sea of Cortez, Cortez. For almost the whole trip, I worried how my kids would react and who would take over my class if I didn't make it back alive. I worried until the day when the wind blew so hard and the grave, waves grew so big that one by one, every kayak in our party, except the one my husband and I were on, flipped over. That day, my fears changed. I wasn't worried about the kids. I knew they would be okay. I worried for myself. It was real. Luckily, we made it back, took shelter and let the storm pass. We as teachers need to not be ashamed to admit we fear for our own and for our own families' lives. None of us has ever faced a global pandemic before. We need to take shelter until we get this under control. It's bigger than your latest well-laid-out plan. It's bigger than all of us.
Thank you. Speaker number 30, with an advance apology for mispronouncing your name, Keith Harahausen. Keith, are you with us tonight?
I am. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Anchorage School Board members. My name is Keith Harahausen. I'm a teacher in a multi-age classroom comprised of first, second and third graders here in the Anchorage School District. This last Thursday, I was stunned, stunned to hear of Dr. Bishop's announcement to restart school for pre-K through second grade on November 16th. When school started in the fall, it was deemed by our health experts that it was unsafe for the community if our daily number of COVID-19 cases were greater than 29 per day. When this subject wasn't met by our community, ASD created a new matrix to include more data to inform the decision of when it would be safe to return to school. The term "medium risk" came about based on these new data points. New data points included categories like the number of new COVID cases per day, the availability of intensive care units in our community and the existence of COVID-19 community spread in our community. Let's be clear, based on ASD's own risk assessment, we are not in a medium-risk environment. In fact, on ASD's own website, we are now in the highest risk level for the transmission of COVID-19 in schools and we are pushing the edge of the envelope in our healthcare settings with nearly 90% of available intensive needs beds occupied. This is my 20th year teaching in the Anchorage School District and one thing I've learned over time is that this district is big on data. Data to drive instruction and data to inform decisions. My question to you is why is ASD abandoning its own data? I've heard the reasons given this evening and I did not hear any real data to fully support it. Tonight, there were comparisons made of successes of larger school districts like New York with the anticipated successes we might see here in Anchorage. New York has rapid testing available on the ground and ready to use. ASD does not. What we heard tonight is, we're looking into it. Guess what? When lives are on the line, it's not appropriate to compare anticipated successes in Anchorage with the successes seen elsewhere when the same mitigation practices are not even in place. Here are a few highlights from articles this weekend in the Anchorage Daily News. Over the past week, Anchorage saw a 40% increase in COVID-19 cases. That from Dr. Janet Johnston, epidemiologist with the Anchorage Health Department. Anchorage averaged over 102 new cases a day, 72 more than the threshold initially used to determine school closures. Anchorage has tripled, let me repeat that, tripled for everyone listening, tripled the number of cases that place communities into the high alert category. Updated CDC guidelines last week include this, that this virus is also able to spread more than six feet via airborne transmission. You know, Dr. Johnston said the days are getting shorter, it's getting cooler and there's more mixing inside. And she goes on to say, "It feels to me that that's what the big driver is." Let those words sink in. I'd like to add several more reasons why I was stunned, shocked and appalled to learn of the maligned and misguided decision to return students to the classroom November 16th. Twenty-two days of instruction with a plan that is not fully developed or supported by PPE. In a time of rapid community spread, are we seriously going to bring students back November 16th for a week? And then send moving students back to their families? Yes.
I'm sorry, the three minutes are up.
It's a mistake.
Thank you so very much.
And we deserve, we deserve better.
Thank you. Speaker number 31 is Christina Talbot Clark. Christina, are you with us tonight?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for your patience. You have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you and thank you for extending the agenda or changing it. My name is Christina Talbot Clark. I'm a graduate and a parent in the Anchorage School District. I'm speaking tonight about the Calvert Online Program in the district's virtual school. I signed my third grader and kindergartner up for the ASD at-home virtual school option this fall because I was not willing to send my children back to school, even at the former medium-high-risk average case count of 29 per day, let alone at the current levels. After one quarter, I have removed my third grader from ASD at-home. And since no sufficiently low-risk schooling alternatives are available, I am unenrolling him from the Anchorage School District. Over the past quarter, my son and I have had the support of an outstanding teacher. Unfortunately, her skill and effort could not make up for the failings of the Calvert Online Education Program, which seems to have been designed to take a child's innate love of learning and strangle it to death. Calvert describes its lessons as being written to the student. Nothing could be further from the truth. Basic concepts are poorly presented and ill-explained. The language used is practically cut and tasted from Common Core standard sheets with no consideration for age appropriateness. Teachers are trained to interpret and use teaching standards. Parents and students are not. Yet Calvert seems to be under the impression that presenting a student with a list of standards is a viable form of education. The lessons themselves are ridiculously segmented, which disrupts students' enthusiasm and focus. No teacher who wants a student to enjoy reading would stop a story after two or three pages to explain prepositions, yet this curriculum does precisely that. Additionally, if the program offers no flexibility in level, so students cannot catch up or work ahead if the material is too challenging or too easy for them. The only personalized option is additional work based on assessment tests, which is no help at all for a student already struggling with an incomprehensible and unskippable-based curriculum. The Calvert program retains the limitations of in-person teaching, like time constraints on lessons and teaching according to grade level rather than individual aptitude, without introducing any of the potential of individualized instruction for personalized curricula or flexibility in lesson timing. And what it does, it does poorly. It was mentioned earlier this evening that there will be modifications to the virtual school program and I'm very glad to hear it. But even with changes, I strongly suggest the district assess students' progress in the Calvert program as if they were learning in a hostile environment, because they are. And if Calvert promised the administration an individualized, student-focused program as its introductory videos promised us, I recommend you ask for your money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking down the list, I believe the next three people I had, uh, signed up are not on the line or here or available, which leaves the last caller, uh, speaker 35, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you here?
Yep. Hello.
All right. Thank you for your patience. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Woo, good Lord, it's been a long night. Uh, first of all, I would like to say, um, thank you to the board and congratulations on your unanimous decision tonight. I believe wholeheartedly that you did the right thing, um, tonight in voting for Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School. You will go down in history. All right. So congratulations to this board for doing that. Uh, second thing, um, I would like to take this opportunity to testify, uh, on opening classrooms during, um, you know, uh, public testimony here. I, I am firmly opposed to it. I must adamantly object. All right. I mean, seriously, are we really gonna open schools in November? You know, uh, during the last board meeting and really this one, a number of people pushed for reopening classrooms. Uh, some even, uh, you know, some of the arguments were heartfelt and impassioned and I got it. I understand your, your point of view. Uh, but now what I, I would ask you to understand mine, all right? Uh, you must not open schools until we get this virus under control, which we do not have. In fact, cases in Alaska and Anchorage are on a steady climb. If we open classrooms now, it will be a disaster. It will be a recipe for disaster, especially for our Black, Brown and Indigenous populations. Because as you should know, of, uh, of all child COVID-19 deaths in the United States, children of color make up a whopping 86%, according to the CDC. You heard it right. Children of color make up to 86% of all child COVID deaths. And you can find that with the world or the United States' most diverse population in America, yikes. If you open your classrooms, if you open classrooms, deaths may happen, child, teacher or family. And when it happens, who here will deliver the bad news? Who in this room, among us, is prepared to do such a thing? I'm a retired Army combat officer with two overseas tours, combined serving in Iraq, Afghanistan and Kuwait. Among my duties were as a CENTCOM Casualty Operations Officer, third HRC Casualty Assistance Officer, and I even was a bugler on numerous funeral details when I was enlisted. Those were among the toughest jobs I ever had to perform in the Army. And I can tell you, having to notify families that their loved one has died, right? Uh, you know, it was, you know, of the, it paid the ultimate sacrifice for their country, uh, is, is heart-wrenching. And those were volunteers. Our children, our teachers, our family, they're not volunteers in this war.
Mr. Kemp?
All right. Are you prepared to do the same, to tell these families on behalf of a grateful school district, "Thank you for your loved one's sacrifice"? You know, who's gonna knock on that door?
Danielle.
So remember, our children... So remember, our children can recover from a lost academic year, but they can never recover from death. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our public testimony, and we circle back around to non-action items. Do any board members want to pull any of the non-action items on the agenda tonight? Not seeing any? Go ahead. I feel like we still have some discussion, but I'm looking around and people look tired, so, um, I still have questions, I can put them in an email. Okay, we'll take them in an email. Next up, school board and administration comments. Does anybody have any comments? Member Marset?
So, I have been asked by several school board members and others to extend my service on the school board, and we haven't quite worked out the details yet, but I will be extending, I'm still going to resign, but I'm going to extend it to, once we figure out the details and how that'll work with the election and everything, I will extend it till March or April, which one works best for the board.
Thank you. Member Hildy?
So you're saying that means there won't be an appointment process and there won't be an appointed board position?
At this, at this point for member Marset, see, no, she is trying to work with a different timing schedule, yes. Yep. Are there any other school board member or administration comments? Member Mitchell?
I want to thank all of the people who came out to testify this evening. I think that's extremely important to hear from people, and I really appreciate the folks who stayed with us till this late hour. I also want to congratulate the board on making, getting the vote done. I'm just thrilled that we are honoring Senator Davis. And I also want to thank everybody in the district from the top down to the, you know, I've talked to several TAs this week, and everybody is working really, really, really hard to make this situation work for all of our students, and I just, I know the entire board is very, very appreciative of all the magic that's happening in spite of the horrible situation that we're in, and, you know, I know everybody's gonna keep working to do the best for our kids.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands up raised in the queue. I want to thank everybody for staying tonight, enduring tonight, administration on the phone in person, all of the board members' attendance, the public's attendance. Remind everybody that our next meeting, our regular meeting, is Tuesday, November 3rd. That is also Election Day. Make sure you vote before you come into the board meeting, please, and we look forward to... Seeing any objections? I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I move, I'm moved to adjourn. I moved to adjourn.
We're adjourned.